Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Thursday, January 23rd. The agenda for this evening will be approval of minutes from the two dates in December. We'll have a discussion with the Chairman of the Personnel Board on a memorandum of agreement for the superior officers. We will have a discussion on the proposed noise ordinance from the Noise Bylaw Committee. We'll have a discussion from the Traffic Committee in the form of the Police Chief and on a recommendation for parking restrictions. The HCAM organization will come forth with their annual report, and then we'll have a discussion on budgets that we put a hold on at our last meeting so that we can pass those on to the Advisory Committee. But before I start this evening, one sad note I'd like to convey to the town is that Hal Wallace, Al Wallace, who was the principal person behind the creation of the Dispatch, the first regionalized opportunity for the Commonwealth, passed away unexpectedly yesterday. And so I'll ask you all just to take a moment of silence in his memory. He'd had a, Mr. Wallace had a tough job to do in new arena for the creation of something the government feels is the future for many of us in the town, where we can find common ground to accomplish savings for us all. So for Mr. Wallace's memory, I'd ask you to just pause for a second. That being said, one other piece of information. When I went to bed Tuesday night, Fort Hill Street adjacent to my house, I could see Blacktop as the snow was falling down. And when I got up at seven the next morning, I could still see Blacktop, which is in no small part due to the effort of one particular individual who led the charge, and that's Mike Mullen of our Department of Public Works. I'll give Randy credit for putting Mike in charge of that. Obviously, it went well. That's the good news. The bad news, we went into this last storm with an $80,000 surplus in the snow removal budget. I would expect that sometime about three or four in the morning that went away. I do not have a count on the principal concern. I have about sand and salt. We had used approximately 40% or 50%, Ted is what I recall, but Randy, this afternoon, did not yet have a full assessment of everything that's been done. But certainly, that should not take away from the fact that the streets of Hingham were more than passable and very clear, and it allowed us to open up Town Hall yesterday afternoon. So my commendation to all of those who made that happen. So with that, we have two minutes to approve December 12th and December 19th.
Do you make a motion?
I'm just a little confused as to which of the minutes they were looking at. We've got a couple of sets with that date.
You should have had, there was one typo on the 19th. At what time I saw it, I didn't see it. I want you to know, it was on a, I was, my daughter had a procedure today, and I was at Brigham and Women's, and while she was waiting, she picked it up as she saw the reading over my shoulder, the modification you would see. It says in the 19th session, "With a quorum present, Ms. Rabuffo called the meeting to order." And my wife wasn't here at that meeting. So the adjustment that Sharon made was mister and on the, that's the principle. Okay, that was all. Okay, Irma?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from December 12th and the 19th, 2013.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Dave, David Pace is the Chairman of our Personnel Board, and David is here to report to us on the proposed agreement with the superior officers. And with him, of course, next to his left, we don't recognize him in a suit, but it's our Chief of Police, Mike Perino.
I was working undercover tonight.
Oh, was that you?
He's a handsome guy.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. As you mentioned, I'm here to kind of present to you the terms of the memorandum of agreement we reached with the Hingham Superior Officers Union for a new contract, hopefully for your approval and for signature. First off, I would certainly like to thank all those involved, including the Board of Selectmen, the Town Administrator, the Chief, but most importantly, the members of the Bargaining Unit for the Superior Officers, which would be Officers Farina, Kavanaugh, Corcoran, and Petiti. They were, not surprisingly, very professional, acted with a lot of integrity through the process, and always with a tremendous concern for the town and its citizens and their well-being. So I want to thank them. What I'd like to do, I guess, is just highlight some of the key terms of the agreement and answer any questions you may have. So the first thing I would point out is that it would be a three-year agreement, beginning effective as of July 1, 2013, and run for a full three years. With respect to wages, during the term of the agreement, we agreed to a one-time adjustment for the lieutenant's salary. As you know, we do a 20-town survey, and the lieutenants were very low on that scale compared to the 20 towns, not sergeants, and so we adjusted the lieutenants up to bring them closer to the midpoint. And after that, we agreed to a 2% annual increase in wages, so 2% in year one, 2% in year two, 2% in year three through the term of the agreement. I'd say one very important element of the contract, I know the town has always been very keen on having an educated police force, and we agreed, from the town's perspective, to what I'll call fully fund or fully implement an educational incentive, which is often referred to as the Quinn Bill. And so for the contract, we put in there regardless of what the state does, that the town will fully recognize what was formerly known as the Quinn Bill and that educational incentive benefit for its officers regardless of when they started on duty. Another very key element of the agreement, from the town's perspective, was we were able to get agreement to adopt and implement a drug and alcohol testing policy. So we now have that in place with our, well, we will have it in place once approved with superior officers for a testing protocol if there is suspicion of drug and alcohol use among the police force, which I know is important from the town's perspective and a very keen public safety issue. There is some other minor adjustments, I would say, throughout the contract, whether it was longevity or clothing allowance, we, most of those were either to keep up with inflation or to adjust to make them consistent with some of our other town benefits. And we finally updated our performance evaluation form, which was long overdue, thanks to the Chief. So I think those are kind of the key items of the contract. If anybody has any questions, happy to answer.
Yeah. Before I turn it over to my colleagues, if I could, the equity adjustment on the lieutenants, how, percentage of...
It was a thousand dollars. It was a thousand dollars, so not a large amount.
A thousand dollars, okay. Very good. All right. Mr. Haley, you're the liaison. Would you, any questions on this?
I've had a chance to talk to the Chief about the salient points of this contract, and I think it's an excellent agreement. Maintains the educational level of the police force, which I think is vital to successful policing, so I'm supportive of it, and I thank you for your efforts, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Irma?
Thank you all. It's a very professionally done agreement. I think it's another in the continuing moving forward of Chief Perino and his deputy chief and the superior officers now. But David, another fine contract. Very happy to see the Quinn Bill still in there. I think that's very important as education continues also to get more expensive. This is a very good thing. So congratulations, nice job.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Irma. I think the recognition in the contract for people, to Irma's point, with degrees is just a reinforcement of our position on education. The one issue that had come up was codifying, codifying the drug substance abuse issue. And I know this took a lot of the board's time in discussion, as well as the Chief did a lot of research, and I thank you, Mike, for that. And I think it's the first step, and I think this is in today's age, it's good that we have something in writing that the, that our fellow union, that the union members hopefully will agree with. So I commend you for that.
I do think the union members recognize the value of and importance of it, too.
I think so, and I think it helps them as well as it helps us. So that's a great effort. Thank you, David. Any comments from the audience? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Haley, if you'd be so kind.
Sure. I'll move that we sign the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Hingham, Massachusetts and Hingham Superior Officers Union, MCOP Local 405, effective 1 July 2013 through 30 June 2016.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda has to do with a proposed noise ordinance. I'd like to invite Declan Boland, our Chairman of our Committee, to have a seat. Mike, would you like to join Declan, if I could, if you'd be so kind? Thank you. Let me, there's a lot of misinformation that's out there, and I know some people, I saw some emails where my name was referenced to the fact that, gee, you weren't for the Fields, which is not true. I was for a different solution, but I have been in support, and I, as you'll hear later tonight, in the way some of the funding we've been doing to help get those kind of school issues resolved, to everyone's benefit. More importantly, and therefore the Planning Board did an excellent job of defining the rules and regulations under which the Fields will operate. But the void in the, in the system, if you will, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong on this, is that you had two options on a noise complaint. The first was to respond and say, please be quiet, and if there were significant issue beyond that, you had no standard necessarily to apply. But your only next choice of action was to file criminal charges for disturbing the peace.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
So the question we were, clearly, we don't like to file criminal charges for someone who's having a party or operating a device that may exceed or become an irritant to a neighbor. So the effort was, could we do something that would be an intermediate step, and yet life to go on, as people have voted for it? So when they were here last time, there were some additional issues that the committee looking at it said they wanted to go back and refine. And Declan and Dennis King, I think is here, thank you, Dennis, they have done that effort and submitted a revision to that. So the question is, we'd like to hear that tonight and hear your, and then obviously, people have comments on that, and they want to see clarification on it, so that's why obviously many of you are here. So with that, Declan, I'll turn it over to you, if you'd be so kind to...
Okay. Mr. Chairman, Selectmen? I thought I'd recap a little bit in terms of where we were, and then just fill in the gaps between the last meeting and this one. It's sort of ironic, after hearing the agreement between the police unions, is that now we're going to give them something to do, actually. When we started off in this committee, it was actually October 16th, and the goal that we set ourselves is to set a bylaw that was fair and effective. Since then, we've had six additional public meetings, and there's been a number of articles in the paper. The committee members were chosen from a wide variety across the town, but really representing different interests of the town. Joe McCracken, who's here, is actually a former policeman. There's Dennis King, who's a lawyer. Vicky Donlin, who's on the Rec Commission and representing to some extent the sports interests in town. Brian Neese, a commercial real estate, and myself, who actually experienced with noise. And then we had a liaison with Deputy Chief Olson from the Police Department. So we set out with a number of criteria regarding what we were trying to do. We were trying to keep it simple. We were trying to not cater to any specific interests in the town. We reviewed the complaint log that the Police Department had. We looked at the existing bylaws that are in place. We looked at comparable towns. There was 20 towns we looked at particularly, but also we went to even a farther group than that, and we saw what they had. We also wanted to focus, if we could, is to have more quantitative-based metrics rather than actually qualitative ones, so that it isn't open to interpretation regarding what a noise issue is. And then finally, we wanted to create a bylaw that was enforceable, and that was really a critical part, really going back to what you were talking about. So when we started off, we actually, we looked backwards first, and we said, what is enforceable? And in the noise ordinances, we were fortunate to come across a document that we saw that was the, basically, a bible of actually how you create a bylaw. So it actually allowed us to accelerate through the process. I'll just summarize a little bit about noise complaints in the town in 2011, 2012, which was, November 11th through 13. And this is a summary of where the police were tracking noise. There was, in that time period, it was 348 calls. We found that the busiest time for calls was between 9:00 and 10:00 p.m. in the evening. 8:00 to 9:00 p.m. was the next busiest time, 11:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., and then finally, 12:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. And then the least busiest, as you can understand, is between 8:00 a.m. in the morning and then 3:00 p.m. in the afternoon for those hourly periods. So you probably can understand that that's fairly typical of where you see all of this. The busiest month is July, and then the least busiest month, we're just about to enter, is February. So with that, the other thing was about looking at sort of future recommendations, and they said, this is a process. This is basically is that we started down this road in terms of trying to create a draft bylaw, which actually tonight is really only about saying, this is the work that we've done up until, up to date. It's actually a draft bylaw that we actually created and published only last Thursday, and it was open to commentary and review by the general public as well as everybody else. So after tonight, it actually continues to be a draft, and it won't be a bylaw until it's actually approved at town meeting. So I just want to make sure that people are assured in this. This is not actually, that actually happens tonight that is dead and in the water. We also got various other departments involved, the Board of Health, the Building Inspector, and the School Committee, because they were actually direct and indirect interests in all of this. And so it actually turned out to be fairly socialized within the number of town departments. As I said, we had to put a freeze on the document, which we did last Thursday, a week from today, and then it was published, I think, was last Thursday, and that's when it actually went out to the general public. With that, we got, initially, we got some mixed reaction. In some cases, people thought it was too lenient. In some cases, people thought it was actually too harsh. But that's quite common in terms of something like this. But when, in the recent, I suppose, 24 hours, 36 hours, we did get a lot of increases and comments from people, which is probably why a lot of people are here today. But I'll just summarize them in terms of what, at least what I saw in terms of the comments. There was quite a lot of emails came into the town, which was forwarded onto the committee. But one of them is a belief that the existing bylaws are adequate, which clearly the Chief says is not. A lack of understanding of what the bylaw content in, and actually, that's probably got, really got to do with the responsibility of socializing and informing people and education regarding what this is, which is really what we're trying to do. There was an issue regarding the clarity of decibel metrics we used, and we debated this, but one thing was not highlighted in the whole process was that we've asked for a third-party consultant in order to determine what those numbers are. So we're still waiting for, to engage in that. In fact, I contacted Roger this week. He's away, I think, is, but to my knowledge, is actually, that's in process. The point being is that we put in a sample, or example, I suppose, of what those metrics should be with the, based on actually what we've seen in other towns, and that's really, so we wanted to put in and say, we throw it out there and see what it is. And we have different views in terms of what that is. We will come out with actually some number that actually we think might be workable. There's also comments regarding the effort and cost of enforcement, and it's actually like, I can only allow, let the Chief here comment about that. And then finally, is that there was a belief that the bylaw was targeted, which I saw to sports organizations, which actually, during the discussions we had, it never came out that this was, this was part of the discussion at all. And in fact, we'll talk about that a little bit. So with that, there were two other issues which are unresolved in the previous discussion that we have here. Motorcycle noise. As part of the review that we had after the Selectmen's meeting, we talked about this again quite extensively, and there were certain citizens who were actually very, felt as though we were not addressing the noise issue for motorcycles. Our view on this one was that, one is that actually it was talked about two years ago, I think it was, and we had, there was a debate at the time, and a decision made by the town attorney, that this issue was really more at the state level, and that the, what the police force had to do is enforce state law, not a bylaw. So, and secondly, regarding that, is that we also felt as though, because it was discussed in a previous thing, we hadn't had a discussion with the town attorney at the time, so hence we did not know exactly what the determination was. So our recommendation was to go back to, with this document, if it's approved by the Selectmen, is to go back to the town attorney and have that reviewed at that level to see if it can be complied with whichever way it goes forward. The second issue was brought by, and by the way, one of the citizens who attended these meetings, a guy called Tom Sobran, suggested amendment to the agreement, which is in this document here, and it was, and that was really as part of the package that we sent to the Selectmen regarding that the town attorney should review that, and then further, obviously, advisory, and then it would be part or not part of the, of the bylaw that would be submitted to town meeting. The second issue was regarding maintenance work by the harbor master in DTPW. They actually highlighted it specifically separately regarding pieces of work that they have to do, for instance, maintenance on the road at nighttime, or doing dredging during the harbor at nighttime as well. So it's title issue for the harbor master. Both of those are actually taken care of in the bylaw, we believe. However, we felt as though if this is an issue, then we would actually let the town attorney determine if that goes forward in that way as well. So with that, I think that was the last part of the comments that I have. So I pass it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Michael, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, what the Police Department is looking for is, is a tool where we can actually, you know, help out a citizen who calls on a noise complaint. And as we said before, when we get a call to go to a noise complaint, usually we go there and we talk to the people and say, look, you know, we got a call about you, and they'll quiet down. And we will always tell them, you know, we don't want to have to come back. You know, if we do, then, you know, we're going to have to step it up a little bit. So if we do have to come back, then we have to charge them with disturbing the peace. So now that means they have to go to court. It could be a hearing, it could be an arraignment, depending on whether it's an arrest. And then you have to get an attorney, and then if the person's found guilty, they have a record. So by having the bylaw, if we have to come back and, you know, again, talk to the people, most people will comply, but if they don't comply, then you hand them $100 citation, civil. No court, no record, and as the Chief, I don't want to be taking my residents to court and going through the whole court procedure and possibly getting that person a record over a noise complaint. So this is why we're asking for this, because I don't want my officers going to call, ah, call the Building Commission, there's nothing I can do, you know? And that's for a lot of the calls. We don't even have anywhere where it has a time period where construction starts, you know? So this would give us the tool, and that's all we're asking for, is a tool for the officers to have in their toolbox and be able to address the situation without hauling one of our residents into court.
Okay. Let me, if I may, I'll turn it over to my colleagues shortly. The concern that I've heard people have, well, what about the sports activity? And I think all sports activities, if they are permitted, which the Fields certainly are, and they use the Fields, then this would not apply. They would be, any organization that has been permitted to hold an event would be covered by that permit. Is that, is that what the law says? And I guess I'll ask that to you, Declan, or Dennis, if you feel...
I'll have Dennis answer this.
Yeah. This is Dennis King, who's a member of the committee.
If I mind, I'm here wearing two hats. One is as a member of this committee and also, obviously, as a resident of Hingham. I think the commentary that we've received that's the most off-base, at least with the respect to the intent of the committee, is the notion that this is somehow going to cause disruption with youth sports in town. Early on in our discussions, we decided two things. We took note of the fact that there was a process of community engagement around the high school fields, hiring of a noise consultant and the like, and we made a conscious decision that we did not want to wade into work that had already been done. We also discussed the fact that there are youth sports in town, there are activities that are okayed by the School Department. A perfect example of that is simply buses coming in and out in the morning. So what we did is we created an exception, an exemption under this. Then there are two that apply. One that applies directly to the high school fields is Section 9A4, which exempts public address systems creating sound, it's sanctioned sporting or other public events. But the other, which is broader, even broader than you just mentioned, is number six, which exempts any activity for which a permit exempting said activity from the provisions of this bylaw has been granted by an enforcement official or that has been sanctioned by a town board or department or official having regulatory authority over the activity. And what we meant by that, perhaps the word sanctioned is causing confusion, maybe we should just say approved, or maybe we should say approved by a department, including without limitation, activities on sports fields. But it was the intent of this committee not to impact youth sports in town at all, or any sport, or any activity that has the, that is approved by a town board or committee. Since I'm up here, let me say a couple other things. The first question that we ask as a committee is, should we have a bylaw at all? And that issue, I think, well, that's the ultimate question, I think it's still the open question. The input that we got from the Police Department, which you've heard from the Chief, is that we don't want to be citing people criminally if there's a noise complaint. We want something in the, in the nature of a civil infraction we can point to, and we would like to have some objective measure. So from that point on, we viewed our task as the following. If Hingham is going to adopt a noise bylaw, what should it look like? And so we looked at other towns, we looked at the white paper that Declan mentioned, and we came up with a draft, always knowing it would be put out there for public comment and always knowing that this was a process. There's no pride of authorship here at all. The bylaw really contains two types of provision. One is called the noise disturbance provision, which is a completely subjective test, and noise disturbance is described as a noise that would annoy or disturb a person, person of reasonable or reasonable sensibilities. And in our view, that's the same as disturbing the peace, except it's now in the civil realm, not in the criminal realm. The second provision, which is, has really been a bit of a lightning rod, is the objective provision relating to decibel levels. We put in a provision of 55 decibel levels. We didn't just pick that out of thin air. It was suggested by the document that Declan referenced. More importantly, it is the decibel level that's contained in the Hingham zoning bylaw for noise emanating from an industrial zone into a residential district. We didn't want to do anything that was inconsistent with what had already been adopted by the town. Having said that, as we made clear the last time, we're not noise consultants, and recognizing that, we insisted that this has to be reviewed by a person who has the training in this area. My own personal view, I think probably 55 is low, despite the fact that it is the level that's adopted by all the other towns we looked at and the level adopted in Hingham. Now, let me put on my other hat as a resident of the Town of Hingham. My own personal view is I'm against the decibel level for two reasons. Number one, it's a lightning rod for opposition that I don't think needs to be there. But number two, and more importantly, I don't think it's ever going to be enforced. What the provision says is that you can't exceed this decibel level for more than 15 minutes in any one-hour period. So... So I just can't see a Hangham police officer going out with a sound meter, sitting on a property line for potentially up to an hour. I just don't see it happening. And so what, personally, what I would prefer to see is just a subjective test which gets us past the civil/criminal issue, and the police can show up and say, "Look, you're causing a ruckus, it's too late at night, knock it off," and if they don't, impose a fine. And I should also say, in our discussions, it was also very clear from the police department representative, that they're not, this is not a revenue generator, they're not looking to assess people fines. It's going to be an educational process, and they're going to be warning people unless it's an egregious violation. So that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Dennis. Declan, the 348 complaints, the analysis was what? Do you, did you find out, or Mike, either one, what were the kinds of complaints?
Unfortunately, if I recall correctly, is Chris Allen?
Yes, yeah. You're back.
Yeah, Chris, do you remember how it was broken out?
This is Chris Phillips, Lieutenant Sergeant Phillips.
I went over it month by month.
Could you come to the, Mike, thank you, thank you, Chris.
Good evening. Just give me the question one more time, so make sure...
Now, the analysis of the 348 complaints, what kind were they?
What we did, we went over a 12-month period, and we just looked at every noise complaint, every type that came in, dates, times, time of day, day of week. There were anything from, you know, motorcycles, loud parties, gunshots, just anything that somebody would call up on. So I'm just trying to remember, I think motor vehicle was probably the highest complaint, and gunshots was the lowest number.
And I think, two comments on it. One was that the police department didn't track it to that level of granularity, so that's why Chris is struggling in order to remember the characters or categories. And then secondly, and some of the research I did look at in terms of, it's in another document, the white paper, talks a little bit about that, so a lot of it actually has to do with motor vehicles, that type of thing. It's the normal type of noise that you'd imagine it would fall into those categories, but the police department didn't track it in that way.
Give me a second, I might have it with me.
Do you have it by section at town? Like, how many are coming out of the shipyard?
I have it all.
Okay, why don't you take a minute, if you could do that, we'd be happy to do that. Just one other issue. I know when the fields opened, there was a question the opening night over what was the noise level? And of course, there was a problem with the sound system, as I recall, because I heard it and I live two miles away, so obviously, but that got addressed very quickly, thanks to the school committee and others. And I think, if I may call on the deputy, you took some further tests, maybe you'd like to explain to the committee.
Sure, Deputy Chief Glenn Olson. I think it was the first football home game, I'm not sure if it was the first one, it was a night game. I would estimate the crowd probably around 250 people, and in the documentation that was provided under the agreement to have the operation of the events of the fields, they had basically proposed different locations and sound levels along the border, mainly of Union Street and two positions on, behind, along the fence behind the old field bordering down the route. And I went to these various different locations, I think the Union Street, the noise level could not exceed 55. We do have a sound meter that was provided, and I went to these different locations. I stood out there on Union Street, probably about halfway in between the far parking lot and the high school auditorium parking lot. The decibels never went over 55 for the entire game. While I was standing there, 10 feet from the road on the sidewalk, when a motor vehicle would pass me, the motor vehicle would register at about a decibel level of 65. So the engineers did a very good job on the sound issues. I went to the back of the field and it was the same, the same issue. I believe off the top of my head, the back issue was set at 50 along Downing Street, and it never went over the 50. So I think one of the keys, and then I also, excuse me, I traveled around a couple of other neighborhoods, I went down to Home Meadows. This was later in the evening, I actually spoke to a resident there because I was in plain clothes and I didn't want to think I was robbing her stuff. She said, "Okay," I explained. I went into her backyard because I picked a location that was the closest residence to the fields. When I went back behind the house, the noise there never registered over 45 on the decibel meter. Generally speaking, it was between 40, sometimes when the, it might go up to 45, but one of the things that I've sort of learned about decibel readings, and it's really confusing, and I'm not an expert by any means, but there's different ways to measure it. You have to use the slow method, which allows the machine to, or the decibel reader that you're using to adjust for the different pitches that occur. While the noise is going on, it's not steady, there's other noise going on. Prior to this meeting, I came in here when the room was empty, the overhead projector was playing, and the computer was running, and that was it. The sound level then at this room was 40 decibels with nothing else in it, and that included the, one of the custodian vacuuming over here, I could hear the vacuum going. So it was a sound decibel of 40. I've sort of had it running in the meters right now. When I get over near it, it goes up to 70.
Don't come near us.
But I've been accused of being very loud, so I don't even need a microphone. Normally during the meeting, I've been watching, and it's been varying between 50 to 55 and that range in there. One of the things with decibel readings is you need to make sure you use the A scale and a slow reading, a slow meter reading. A more expensive unit measures it out over a period of time. So the other thing is that I know, just to, some misinformation that I read in the papers and stuff, that if, I'm in a library and I whisper, they say that's 45 degrees. What they didn't put in the news article was that's at three feet. Normal conversation registers around 55, that's standing next to each other. Now, the sound engineers use the professional method of actually moving out to the boundary lines to see what the noise is, so the noise wouldn't emanate over that. So as you move away from the sound, it obviously gets less and less and less. Like we said, we sort of went with the decibel readings over there, that had sort of been consistent around, and that 55 range was something that we had seen used in a couple of the other town documents. That's sort of why we went with that. And I'm glad to say that the engineers actually did a very good job in planning this and came, and came out with, you know, really working figures that were true and accurate. I think that's one of the reasons we wanted to have an engineer look at this, that had more knowledge of sound than we did.
Okay, thank you, Glenn. Mike, is Chris ready?
I will just say one thing about the numerous gunshot calls, turned into fireworks calls. I don't want the residents to think there's a lot of gunshots going on. A lot of them are fireworks, mostly.
Okay, thank you.
What I have here is just the list of complaints for the year prior that we were looking at. Depending on how dispatch logged them in, most of them were either a noise complaint or disturbance without any particulars. Looking at them, it's, you know, fireworks, noise complaint disturbance, fights, motor And the chief just asked me to do a quick tabulation for the area of town. Just looking at it, I can say that the north end of town, okay, basically the 3A on both sides, is the busiest for the complaints. And a quick count on the shipyard, there's probably 20 to 30 complaints over the last year, noise complaints of various types.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you for that information. Paul?
I go back to my own experience as a police officer here in Hangham, and I concur with what the chief said. I worked the midnight to eight shift, and Joe McCracken was my lieutenant. And if we got a call to a house as a courtesy to a resident, we'd always say, "Hey, you know, we're getting calls." Sometimes we'd go and we'd hear nothing, but we'd still let the, you know, the resident know. If we had to come back, we might say, "Hey, knock it off where you're going," because we don't want to keep coming back all night, we have other things to do. It's frustrating, disturbing the peace, it's a fine, but if it ties an officer up, making an arrest, or even just doing a summons arraignment, it's an irritating use of resources. If, you know, the chief has the option of a civil infraction appropriately used, that might be a good solution. What Sergeant Phillips has just said, it's no surprise to me that noise complaints are more prevalent in the more densely settled parts of town. What I was looking for was complaints about lawn mowers or leaf blowers, I didn't hear any there. I read the emails that a number of you have sent in. I have a snow blower, I use it, I mow my own lawn. I don't think that there's an intention here to cite people for mowing the lawn. I've also been subject to noise complaints myself by a neighbor who was hypersensitive and used the police as a weapon on me. The decibel idea to me, I was on the planning board before I got elected here, and we used that up at the high school on the stadium. My memory, though, is that the decibel level emanating to the perimeter of the property was significantly higher than 55. So I understand the need for some kind of objective criteria. The way this particular bylaw is written, the decibel application only applies to residential districts anyhow. The high school field is open space, so therefore would be exempt from that kind of decibel analysis, even if there wasn't such a restriction imposed by virtue of the permit that was issued. Not all the other fields have that kind of restriction, however, they're open space, so they wouldn't be subject to that kind of regulation. I think this is a work in progress. I mean, I think that we even saw publicly here tonight, just a tension between the committee members, trying to figure out what the best approach is to go forward on this. You know, the town, the town controls this, I mean, it's going to be majority vote at town meeting, I believe, so the residents will be the ultimate arbiter of whether or not something like this should go forward. I spoke to the chairman of the school committee, you know, his concern was that, you know, the sports activities not be compromised, I share that view. I like to hear children playing, that's not a noise that offends me. I live right next to the high school, but I've heard them play on Saturdays for years from where I do live, so I think that this continues to be something that we've got to work through, and, you know, I hope that those of you who want to speak out against it, will just give it a chance to work itself through. We've had one hearing, you know, I have a lot of respect for the members who took on what is obviously an unpopular subject, and I'd like to give them the opportunity to kind of just flesh this out a little bit more. Having done bylaw change proposals over the years on the planning board, I know that the final result rarely resembles what it started out originally. And these hearings are good for that reason, just to kind of flesh out the concerns of the people, so stay with it.
Okay, thank you. Irma?
Well, I want to congratulate the committee on a job well done, a lot of time and effort. I think it's a work in progress, I don't think it's ready for prime time yet. We do need to give the police department something to work with, but I think in terms of, we're now at the end of January, which is hard to believe, time to start Christmas shopping again. And town meeting is coming in April, and between now and the time the warrant is finally put to bed, I don't know that you have enough time to go through a number of open meetings, have your consultant come in, and have something for the public to vote on. Because I reached out, and I want to apologize to everybody, there was an email change made, I guess, last night that I was not aware of. So if your emails bounced, send them back again, and you could send them directly to me and I'll get them to Betty Foley. But these are the groups I reached out to, and most of them had not seen this, and that's a pretty dangerous thing to take something for these groups who are going to be affected by it to town meeting, and then your bylaw, which may be a very good one, will tank, for sure. So the groups I reached out to was the Bear Cove Park Committee, they do outside events, and the South Shore Country Club Board of Managers, the Merchants Association, South Shore Conservatory, Hangham Yacht Club, Lincoln Maritime, the sports groups that I was aware of, and then I just tonight sent one to the Women's Softball League, which I apologize, I didn't know that was a separate group. And we did get quite a lot of feedback. I think the wording needs to be wordsmith, and I agree with one of your committee members about the decibel levels, because there were a number of the responses that came in today and yesterday, had information about decibel levels on what other towns or what other groups use. One of the more interesting ones came from, and I won't mention his name, a man that works with rock concerts, and he actually mentioned the Bank of America Pavilion, which I know well, because we usher there. And there is residences, residential areas directly across from it, and they are very, very, very expensive, so they are very, very powerful people. And the Bank of America Pavilion does have noise restrictions on them. So one of the things I, well, one of the other areas I worry about is the backyard hockey rinks. I love those. Our neighbor used to put one up when his kids were playing hockey, and we very nicely had the Hangham High School hockey team in our backyard. And yes, it was noisy, and yes, it was wonderful, and yes, it went beyond 10 o'clock, and that was okay. So I think those things have got to be aired out in public hearings. And one of the things I might also suggest is maybe for this year's town meeting, a modified article, come out and ask the town, knowing well we've got to put something in place for the police department, asking the town whether they want a noise bylaw covering all aspects of the town, just a thought. So I think, I think you have moved this forward, but I think there is so much more work to do, Declan.
Okay.
My two cents.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Irma. Any other comments from my peers, or, let me open it up for questions. Any comments, hopefully we've answered some of the questions that you've heard, but come on up, tell us who you are, where you live, and...
My name is Mike Pungitore.
I'm sorry, could you say that again, please?
Mike Pungitore.
Yes, sir.
My father owns the landscape business here in Hangham, we are residents of Hangham. I guess our biggest concern, and one of the questions I was going to ask, and Officer Phillips kind of went over it, what were those 384 calls? And what we went over, a lot of them really didn't have to do with construction, didn't have to do with, you know, mowers, blowers, all that stuff. Our biggest concern is seeing that the 15 minutes every hour can be kind of restraining on a construction business. That's our biggest problem. As far as the timeframes, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, I think is what was in the article, 8:00 PM. Anything beyond that or earlier than that, and I'm coming from, you know, the construction side, that we agree with. We, you know, to be out there too early, too late, doesn't make sense. So that's something that we kind of are looking at and saying, "Hey, you know, hold on a second." And that's where our kind of side comes from, so, you know, if we can get something kind of, to address that situation is, I guess, where I'm coming from.
Let me comment on this. Going back to the process, is this is a work in progress. So we had to put a stake in the ground, and we've actually only published this a week. So we've had a lot of feedback, we haven't had a meeting since we published it, so we're actually gathering all that. We haven't even actually got... We haven't even actually got all of the emails from, and actually seen them and analyzed them. We haven't had that luxury as yet. But, going back to the point, as Zach just said, and Dennis brought it up as well, you know, you mentioned there's a conflict in the committee regarding...
A difference of opinion.
A tension, yeah. I thought it was an interesting choice of word there, Paul, so it was that. But, really, it's actually, is that the, it's only from the point of view that we did vote to move this ahead. It doesn't mean to say that it's firm.
True.
So, you know, we appreciate the feedback. It's actually, it's wonderful. I'm really glad that people are interested in this, as being that they're doing. So, what I'm saying is, actually, said, we want to take this, analyze it, and then go back and amend moving forward.
Absolutely.
This is not meant to be a firm.
Very good. And I had a second point, kind of from a resident's point of view. It would, I assume it's going to increase the number of calls that you're going to get, when people are going to know that, now that they're, they can be cited, you know, they can call in a neighbor to get a citation. Now, that, that will also include another step. So, before, you were saying that you could go out, give a warning, and then say, hey, if we come back, you know, it's some serious stuff. This is kind of another buffer, the way that I see it, is going to create a third visit. So, you get that second visit of citation, and if those people are rowdy a third time, you're going to have to go back an additional time. So, that increases resources, increases expenses. So, that's, you know, another point that I kind of was curious about.
I think it's a good question. What I'm hearing you say is, Mike, how many, how many disturbance of the pieces, complaints, do you know? Have any rough idea of...
Over 300, you know.
I mean, they all ultimately could be a criminal offense, is what...
Oh, it could be, yeah. And that's why, you know, that's why I take pride in my offices and, you know, how reasonable they are. And out of those 300, you know, I would say maybe a dozen were disturbing the peace, ended up in court, you know. So, it's, you know, it's not, that's why, you know, it's brought up, this is not a revenue maker at all, you know. This is just to give us a tool to, to address, you know, if somebody's calling, we're going to go respond, and we're going to find out what the issue is, and, and talk, if you were doing your job, I'm going to talk to you, I'm going to tell you, look, you've got a complaint from neighbors, there's anything you can do to make it a little quieter here, you know. And, and if he's not cooperative with me, and, and I have to come back, he's getting a citation, you know. But, you know, most of the time, when we go to these disturbance calls, people, they cooperate, you know. Because a lot of these people, it's their neighbors, you don't want to get your neighbors really, you know, mad at you and, you know, have issues. So, you know, so, that's why, this is a work in progress, and, and that's why, this is good. You know, we're hearing from, you know, changes we can make.
Yeah. You weren't here last time. I think the committee recognized that this is a foot in the water, toe in the water, perhaps, maybe now it's a foot, and that they felt that they should stay in place for a period of time to continue to evaluate its impact. From my point of view, having been disturbed by people in your business, it was very difficult. At 6:00 in the morning, there was no start time. Sometimes, you know, this puts some boundaries to it, and that's, makes the job of the building commissioner a lot easier.
Right.
You know. So, that's the, that's the other side of this.
And unfortunately, there are, you know, a few people that do it, ruin it for everybody else in every, in every aspect of it.
And that's the whole issue about this. That's, that's exactly right.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Dennis?
Just two quick points, Bruce. Construction activity, domestic, use domestic, domestic power tools, et cetera, the...
Yeah, better come up, yeah.
The objective...
Just, could you start again, just so the folks...
Yes.
Thank you.
With respect to the activities set forth in Section 7, construction, loading, unloading, and the like, use of domestic power tools, the decibel restrictions during the hours specified in Section 7 do not apply to them. Now, if there's a question of whether a commercial operation is not, not using a domestic power tool, that can be, that's a drafting issue. On the second point, the enforcement provision of this contains, as its last sentence, nothing contained in this subsection shall prohibit an enforcement official from giving a warning and rule of a fine if, in the official's discretion, a warning is appropriate under the circumstances. The Hingham Police Department insisted on that, because they did not want to be put in a situation where they were required on a first call to give someone a fine.
Okay. Thank you for that. I saw Carol. Yes.
Hi.
Hi. Carol Thalvy, Steiner Drive now in the shipyard, so I know those 20 calls did not come from my place. First, let me thank the committee. I know what it's like to work on a sensitive subject, and I know this is sensitive. I think the reason it is so sensitive is because it surfaced at the same time the field, the field issue surfaced, and I think a lot of people were looking to control the noise with the bylaw from the field. So, I just have some suggestions for you as far as to create some goodwill and feelings and support for your bylaw. I agree with Mr. King that I don't think there should be, or I think there should not be decibel levels written within the bylaw. You know, the sound of piano practice, and, that's a good article you wrote, and the whisper of a library, I mean, it's all subjective. It's all subjective, and I think our police do a great job in determining what is disturbing the peace and what isn't. I think the other thing that you could do to bring some, some clarity to this is to spell out what is a sanctioned public address system? Is the school fields, do they have a sanctioned public address system? What about Haley Field? What about, you know, the field across from Stop &amp; Shop? I think if it's spelled out clearly, there'll be a lot less worry about that issue. And then, having moved down to the shipyard, the other thing you might want to do, and Irma, you gave a great list, because I was thinking, too, the outside concerts, downtown organizations, the MBTA, I mean, they blow that boat whistle starting at some ungodly hour in the morning. It's great, because I know I have three minutes to get to the ship, and then I know when they've left and I've missed it, but I think it would probably break every bylaw and decibel level that you've, you've mentioned there. So, thank you for your hard work, and I, I hope we can come to some resolution, because I know, Chief, I know that you need something to work with as far as, I know I don't want to have to go and have a criminal complaint.
Carol, we wouldn't do that.
Is that the wild parties you're planning to have? Yeah, you'll all be invited.
That's it. Warren?
I'm sorry, Carol. Hi, I'm Warren Pelis here at 147 Main Street, and I, too, as Carol just, just covered, I want to thank the, the committee for the hard work that they've had to do. This is not an easy issue. These issues always end up in a lot of, you know, backlash. So, I guess, our concern, my concerns personally, is that, that I'm fairly new to the subject. You know, the socialization, I'm sure, was intended to go out earlier, but it did not. And the sports community was not involved until recently, and I think your mailboxes are full today. And I think they'll be full tomorrow, and I think they'll be full the next day, because there is, there is a concern. And as you know, athletics, and we keep talking about organized athletics here, there are organized athletics, and then there are the athletics that you send the kids home to do. As being a coach and being involved in all these activities, we like to teach the kids on the field, and then want them to experience it back at home. So, they're going to be playing ball at home, there's going to be five or six of them playing in the backyard, there's going to be noise. There's going to be fathers pitching to their sons, which I did a number of times in the batting cages. That's not sanctioned. It's not sanctioned by anyone. It's going to be a lot of noise. It's going to wear my arm out for a couple hours. Those are the type things that we're not looking at here. I personally think that, that, you know, I've, I've done some research, I've looked out at 100 people on my contact list, and I've either contacted them directly by phone or by email. And of those 100 people, only 90, I'm sorry, only 10 were aware that this was even going on. And out of the 100, none of them support the need for a noise bylaw in town. So, that's 100, which is 200, because they're couples. So, I'm, I'm looking for the research that tells me that this is something that our citizens want. This is something that's going to take up time, and it's going to cause Declan and the rest of the committee to spend an awful lot of time working out the nuances. We know that, I mean, this is just brand new, brand spanking new, we know it's not right. But should we be, even be spending the time? Finest police officers in the world, we have in this town, and the chief, I couldn't be more proud of the work that, that he has done. It does kind of seem like we're killing a flea with a sledgehammer here. 12 incidences in two years is what we're talking about. So, I want to, you know, we're not talking about 360, we're talking about 12 incidences in two years. And we're putting together a noise bylaw, which, by the way, as I'm sure all of you know, very, very few towns in the state have. And the way that those towns have taken care of the issues that I just mentioned tonight is that they've grandfathered religious and athletic communities, which means anything that has been done athletically or religiously is exempt. Whether that's taken by a committee like yourselves, the school committee, they're exempt, because they're grandfathered. So, as we start to go forward, I hope that we start to look at providing the chief with the tool that he needs, not a sledgehammer, maybe something a little bit more precise than that, that he can use on a regular basis, and that we don't start to get into decibel levels and get into having our police officers, as I understand it right now, it would take a half an hour for the first time that the police offer, police officer goes out there and says, hey, listen, the noise level is too high here, and then they go back, they have to go, go back again. It's another half an hour that they've got to spend there in order to determine that the noise level, again, has reached that level. Something that's, that, I don't know, I think we're all paying, we're all very, very happy to pay our taxes, especially when they see them going to, or find police force, but that's not where I want them spending their time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Warren.
Deputy Olson, again. One of the things I just wanted to emphasize is that, I know some of this may seem it was bad timing. This is something that we've, we've talked about addressing, or creating a bylaw that dealt with sound in ordinance, because, and this talk has been going on for 10 or 15 years. We needed, when we referenced the fact that, well, we need something to control noise when people call us, because, you know, the unfortunate part is that we get put into situations that we need to apply to the general public fairly and equitably across the boards. So, some of the events that were mentioned here earlier tonight, like the concerts at the shipyard, they're under a permit. They've gone through a process that said, this is what you're allowed to do. A lot of these events that take place from different organizations get approval through the police department, or the fire department, or the board of selectmen. Those processes have already been going on, so many of them have already sort of got a sanction to them, or they've been given permission to go. So, a lot of these, I think, events that people talk about, I know one of the issues that I happened to see was, what about an event at the yacht club where we have 300 people come in and, I don't want to get crucified for this, but they have sailboat races, I'm not sure what kind they are.
Go ahead, go ahead. You're all right. You're good so far.
But, you know, that process usually involves them hiring a detail officer, managing the situation, watching over it. So, there is some oversight that's been going on with these things, but I, I think what we've struggled with as a police department, that, you know, when you do go to those noise complaints, no one feels that a noise complaint that they're doing is wrong. If I'm having a party, I have the right to have that party, because, why not? But, that doesn't mean that everybody else feels the same way. You know, if three kids are at a playground playing a radio at 9:00 at night, and we get a call about a noise disturbance, they shouldn't be there. Can I differentiate from those individuals that are doing that to a bunch of kids that are down there batting wiffle ball around? So, there has to be some sort of a standardization as to how we apply this. And, and I think that's where we struggle, because we're not really trying to do it, but someone's pieces, if we're getting a call, people are calling us with legitimate complaints. We do have to deal with those. The issue is that, and, you know, it's what people think. We may find out that it's unwarranted, we may find out that it really wasn't that bad, we may be able to talk to the people, but if you're playing softball, or wiffle ball, or anything, or in a skating rink at 10:30 at night, that's not unreasonable if the neighbor has a sleeping baby. And that's where it becomes very difficult for us. And we struggle with that, and I'm sure, no matter what we do, we're always going to struggle with that. So, I think when we talk about, well, what we as a committee were trying to do, is not to particularly say, well, sporting events are okay, that isn't okay. This is okay, that's okay. We needed to sort of do something across the board that we felt was fair and equitable to everybody. And it's obviously a can of worms, but, this is my second year on moving through this process. I'm glad to think that we're getting some progress, because I, I really didn't hear anyone complaining about the fact that we never had a bylaw that stated when the construction hour was worked. So, I think, I can probably, for sure, to say that 7:00 to 8:00 o'clock for construction has probably been something that we can move forward with. And I think if we can continue this process, we'll eventually get to where we want to go, so that the police department will have a tool. And maybe that's including some stricter permitting processes, or defining a process that someone would go through to get sort of the exemption from, you know, the boards or something like that. But I think we're making good progress, and we're willing to work with people. Sound decibels, I said, are a pretty complicated thing, and I think the whole committee is willing to, to adjust these things, so we think that'd be fair, and, and that's our position. But we would like to have some sort of a tool in the end, that we can apply to everybody in general, because we, and, and I say in general, but it's, we have to keep the rights of all people involved here equal, you know, because there are people that like things, and there are people that don't like things. So, we need to keep all the citizens in mind when we do this. And that's the difficult part with our job, half the time. But no matter what we do, someone's mad at us usually. All right?
Thank you. Okay.
For us, too.
One, come, come to the microphone. This will be the last question. You have to come up front, ma'am. We've been at this for an hour. Jess?
Susan Rizzo, 17 Harvard Drive.
I'm sorry, could you say that again, please?
Susan Rizzo, 17 Harvard Drive. If the bylaw passes as it is, would that change the permitting process for those events like down at the shipyard and things like that? Because would the permits be harder to get, because now we have this bylaw? So, I just wanted to go on forward.
I'm not sure Glenn is the right person to answer that question. I think that'd probably be over here on the board level, and I, I can't imagine how it would increase...
So, if we have a bylaw that says you can't have noise, or the decibel level has to be at this, and this, and this, and then they go to the permitting process to get a permit to say, hey, I want to have an event down at the shipyard, the movie nights for the kids, you know, would that, would the bylaw be passed?
The permit with respect to the shipyard was issued in conjunction with the overall permit that was granted by the planning board and the ZBA. And it spoke to the activities that went on there, and that, that would stay in place. That wouldn't become more restrictive as a result of anything here, at all. I mean, that's a very, very densely populated area, as you can see by the amount of calls that have been generated there to the police department, to answer your question.
I think, just to comment on that, is that one thing that's becoming, part of the feedback is actually said, we need some clarity in this bylaw regarding which law trumps which. And I think, and I think that's causing a lot of the conflict. So, I think your, your question is very valid. So, I think it's perhaps something we need to go back and discuss regarding how, how that would work. And I think that perhaps would ease a lot of people's minds.
Declan, one of the other things I would really like your committee to do is to use the homepage, the town homepage, and do a little survey on, do people think we need, begging the question, we've got to do something for Mike and the police department, but do the... do the citizens in general think we need a overall noise bylaw? And what do they think perhaps, and somebody will do a much better job phrasing it than I, what do they think are the most critical issues with respect to noise in the town? Because I can almost bet, if something like this passes, the number of noise complaints in the shipyard is going to skyrocket as people become aware of this, because they know they can.
I don't know if I agree with that.
We'll see. All right. You, sir, you wanted to talk, come on up.
That's all right, Bruce. Appreciate it.
Tom Covany, 34 Middle Street.
We can hear you. That's okay.
Well, I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, they can, they can, Tom.
Appreciate Declan's work. Consider, my only question would be, based on the work that Chris did and the police did, can we see a detailed list of the number of complaints and the breakdown? Because it sounds like firecrackers. Obviously, that's illegal, right, in the town in Massachusetts, correct? Right? And the other one with the gunshots, I don't think is allowed in the town? So those two, if those make up.
They're fine.
Oh, right. So therefore, if I can see the list, or if people can see the list of the complaints, et cetera, would allow us to see what the issues are?
Sure, sure. Good idea. Good suggestion. Okay. Any other questions? I don't want to, if there's people who want to say something, now's the time to do that. I'm going to make a suggestion to the committee. I'm going to, we have a motion here to accept or not accept. And I think with Declan, what you've heard tonight, and what you suggested at the beginning of the meeting, is that there is more work that needs to be done to qualify and quantify this. And if we need us, I think the issue that Mike had raised was a standard. Decibels may not be that standard, but what is the civilian charge issue, to keep it out of the criminal context? And then the, and then the second question, Declan, is maybe we would, I'll ask the town administrator to engage town council, who gives us good advice on this kind of things, just to take a look at this, to see if it has, if it has some merits to proceed. And that also would answer Warren's question about, people are just hearing about this. And our intent was always to make sure that this gets circulated over a long period. So we don't have, to Irma's point, we don't have to have a warrant until March 20. So we've got time to answer and research, and to see if Mike, if we can satisfy Mike's needs with some of the concerns that have been raised here this evening. Is that, Paul, if you have?
I just have an observation for the committee. Couple of years ago, there was, there was something put forward at town meeting with respect to motorcycle noise. And Richard Ennis spoke, I thought, rather definitively on that, in behalf of the advisory committee. And that might be worth getting the transcript of that, because I thought he covered that subject fairly well, with respect to the state preemption of enforcement. And I don't know whether your energy would be best spent trying to come up with something. Chapter nine's got something anyhow. So, I mean, I don't know why that isn't what you use as your tool.
Declan, I'll send that to you, excuse me, I'll send that to you, because I pulled it when we started looking at this.
Yeah. That was a point of discussion, and as I had a long discussion with the chief a couple of weeks ago, the way to enforce the state law. Mike was rehearsing for me how an officer would have to lay on the ground and/or have a mirror to look at the, where the identification of the engine is on the exhaust system to figure whether it qualifies or doesn't. So the problem with the state law, and to Mike's point, is it's almost unenforceable by design. But the complaint, that still doesn't stop the complaint. So there are a variety of issues like that. Okay. So is that agreeable? And I think to the question, Chris, if you could get that list together per Tom's suggestion, and we'll have that as well. Okay. Okay. I think we've given this a good suggestion. Obviously, there'll be more to follow. Okay. Thank you all very much. We have, like to move on to the next issue, while the room empties.
Thanks, Wally.
Are you up, Steve? Are you up next?
Steve, yes. Yes.
Say hello.
Why should the email?
from the traffic committee concerning parking restrictions. And at the last meeting, just to bring everybody up to speed, the chief had asked for some time on the parking restrictions to do some additional research to deal with the issue of congestion and parking in the area surrounding the high school. So if I could invite you, Mike, and Sergeant Darth, if you would be so kind to join him.
As you know, at the last meeting, the board had put out asking comments from the residents in Pleasant Street and Middle Street. And I did get a number of emails. And the feeling was that the Middle Street residents did not want any signs on their street. They felt it was an issue with them. And the Pleasant Street residents, everyone I got from Pleasant Street was in favor of the signs of 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM on the north side of Pleasant Street. The other side is already, there are already signs up that say no parking anytime. And so, so in listening to the residents on Pleasant Street, and after the review from the traffic committee, I would recommend that signs be put up on Pleasant Street between Little and Pond Street on the north side, regarding no parking at 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Okay. Is that on the opposite side of the high school?
On the other side. Yeah. It's on the opposite side of Hingham High School.
Okay.
The side on Hingham High School is already tagged with no parking anytime, and that's because of the narrowness of the street with the sidewalk.
Well, let me ask the question. One of the issues that came up, one of the residents voiced the issue, the two to three period of pickup is a problem. And I think it has a problem in the sense that occasionally the street, the cars back up, they don't go to the park, this is what I hear. They don't go to the pickup area, because people are anxious to get in and get out. And it is a very narrow period of time, as I understand it, 45 minutes or so.
It's even less time than that.
Is it even less?
It's basically 15, 20 minutes for the pickup.
Okay. All right. Is that an issue, or do we think, let's do this and that?
Well, from what the residents have told me, like I said, the emails are all in favor of the seven to twos. And I actually, I did talk to Lieutenant Dot Gallow regarding that pickup thing. And she told me if we didn't allow that pickup to take place, there would be gridlock in the auditorium, parking lot, off Union Street, and behind the cafeteria, because all those people would be forced to go there. And that would cause more of a safety issue out on Union Street. People would just back it up. So the way it was described to me, and I went down and looked at it, if all those people had to go down to the Union Street auditorium lot, then dismissal takes place. So the high school kids are trying to get out, and people back up, because they want to get into the lot. If they can't get in, they just sit there. So it really caused a safety issue.
I just have to tell you, I happened to just pass South School at around 2:30, and I saw the crossing guard that you had added a year or so ago. And it was still congested, clearly.
All of our schools, you know, at that dismissal time, you go to any one of them, it's congested. But it's not for a long time.
No, it's a short period of time. Okay.
No, I'm happy. They talked to the residents.
That's what we want.
They're happy, the residents are happy.
I will add, there was one Pleasant Street resident who was against this, but they're on the other side of Middle Street, so we're not affecting them anyway.
Okay. Okay. Okay, that's good. Paul?
No, I have no comment. I went to high school up there, and it's, I guess I'm just a little wistful that there was once a time where there were no signs up there at all, and it wasn't any big deal. But I guess that's part of the past.
There's a lot more kids with cars these days, Paul, than when we went there.
Yep. That's true.
Okay. Okay. Any comments from the audience? Yes. Yeah, please, if you would.
My only concern is if it goes through.
Just reintroduce it.
My name is Ellen Locken. I live at 47 Pleasant. My only concern would be when would this, if it passes, when it would take place?
As soon as you guys are here.
So could there be an email that goes out to the high school saying signs haven't gone out yet, but there's no parking as of tomorrow? Or the next day, or a week? Just curious.
That wouldn't be practical enforcement. They don't have any signage up there. You know, any email or announcement with the high school wouldn't really, wouldn't be a fair way to enforce it.
So I would, you answer your question would be, once the board approves it, and DPW puts those signs up, then it's enforceable. So.
Okay. And we don't know how.
It's not going to happen until spring, would be my guess.
Okay.
We hope, yeah, we hope we can get out as soon as we can. It depends on the weather, but if the ground starts, because the problem is, DPW can't get the signs in if the ground's frozen.
Okay. All right. I just wanted, because I have seen signs going in, so I didn't know if.
If we can, we will.
Okay. Just curious, people had asked me to.
Legally, we can't tag anybody unless it's posted.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
It's the same issue that we have, by the way, on patching roads. You know, there's a few ponds we're building in the middle of Main Street, but the crew has been out because we got a break in the weather last week, and they got to it. So that's, that's what they do.
I think I just want to know, so like if someone had someone at their house in a week, they would know to tell them.
Yeah. No, no, they'll be up before enforcement. Any other questions? Okay. Ms. Rockoff.
Beth Rockoff, 36 Pleasant Street. I did notify the chief that I support what the neighbors would like as far as posting. I do want to say that I really feel that it's a sad commentary that we have to be here doing this posting of the thing because of the lack of following the guidelines of the regulations that were placed when the school committee was put in, and the school was put in at the area. Because it means an inconvenience not only to the church, for their services, for the funeral homes, and for the neighbors not being able to have a coffee or whatnot. Because one student has elected now to start to violate this, you know, the purpose of parking on campus. And it then triggered teachers and assorted other people parking in the, on the streets. And it became a safety issue with the school bus stop, where there were young children who were trying to cross because their bus stop was right there where the cars were parking, and there was a safety issue and concern for children crossing. But I really feel that, yes, I support doing this for the safety of the students. But I think that the school should address their policy so that it's not an inconvenience to the neighborhoods because of concerns of the school.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Just for clarification, Chief, you're not precluding parking for Pleasant Street from Pond Street to Main Street?
No. This is just between Middle and Pond.
Middle and Pond. That's fine.
Because for the funeral home.
It's all the way down to us. And, you know, this will impinge on them. And I think that's a sad commentary, because they need the parking. And it's.
Well, that's the nature of, you know, we're a growing town. And, you know, as the chief, we didn't have this issue when Paul was, well, this was two or three years ago when you were in high school, so.
I wish.
I'm not going there.
So, no, but it is, it's something we need. And if it works, that's fine. And if it doesn't, we'll revisit the question. That's the way we do it. Okay. So, would you?
Certainly. I'll make a motion to amend the parking rules and regulations of the town of Hingham, adopted May 31, 1939, as heretofore amended as follows. Article 5, parking, standing, stopping. Section 2, prohibited on certain streets. No parking on Monday through Friday between the hours of 7:00 AM and 2:00 PM on the north side of Pleasant Street, from Pond Street to Middle Street.
Second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Is that a second, Mr. Healy?
It's a reluctant second.
Are you struggling with the 1939?
It's both.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Michael, thank you. Sergeant Darth, thank you very much.
Only an hour left. It's 45, but it's not bad.
Eric, come on up. Hi. Sorry to keep you waiting. The subject is, with the creation of the, of HCAM here in Hingham, we've asked them to come in every year to just give us an update, while they are an independent organization. And they do a fine job, particularly with some of the issues. I had an opportunity to read your report today, and you've made a lot of progress, and I commend you from that. But I do want to share that progress with the, with the folks at home. So could introduce yourselves to the folks at home and your.
Certainly will. I'm going to start in the audience. We have other board members here, Laura Burns, Al Goldstein, and our executive director, Eric Dresser. And I'm Jim Dellett, on the board as well. We had, we had a great year, I'll have to say the least. I think everybody's got their copy of our report. And, you know, outlined in our original, our original bylaws was to come to the selectmen and to, to give an annual report of how things are going and what we've been doing. And Eric has done a tremendous job, and continued a tremendous job putting this together for you. I think you'll see that, you know, we've, we've outlined the different topics that are required. And I'm going to let, I'm going to let Eric, Eric's done most of the work. I'm just the face associated with the board.
These agendas, they don't have a copy of. That's what we're talking about. So one clip per person.
One clip per person, including me.
If I could just borrow.
You certainly may.
So again, we're basically going to begin with our year in review document, which is what we're calling this nice colorful document here. And what we did with this was, kind of went over some of the accomplishments for this year. How this differs from last year is that last year for us was the year we found our space that we're currently in. It was the year that we put up the studio curtains, the lighting grid, the cameras, the tripods, the, you know, all of that equipment. If you build it, they will come, I was told. And that has been, the if you come has been the story of 2013, where the if you build it was the story of 2012. So if you look through the report, and it's, it's pretty in-depth and pretty thorough, so I won't go through it word by word. But, you know, we essentially kind of go over who we are, staff board, where we're located. We're right now down in Pond Park Road in South Hingham, 35 Pond Park, Suite 8. Where you can find us on television, if you're watching this, you've already found the government channels. But we also have public channels on Channel 97 for Comcast, Channel 31 for Verizon. And we've been doing some work with the educational channel as of this year on 22, that's not in this table, because we didn't take it over until 2014. So we've got a little bit about our background, our mission statement, and a whole bunch of organizational achievements for this year. We kind of took in and went in and did some snapshots of a lot of that. We've done a really, a lot of work with some of our sports coverage to really make that, you know, kind of pull people in and, you know, get behind their team. We've put some nice graphics up, replays of scoring plays and things like that. We've got a show where you might see some familiar faces in this room on the issues, where we kind of talk about some of the issues that come up in front of the community. Laura was the first host of that last year, and Bruce is now doing that this year. Laura was the first host of that last year and Bruce is now doing that this year. You know, you see us at the parade. We had a really wonderful opportunity this year. We were, we were national and even international news, brought Hingham into the international press with the flash mob up at the middle school. I mean, that type of thing, that doesn't happen every day, so we're really excited about that.
How many hits do we get on the--
Last I looked, it was 900 and some odd thousand.
Really?
Last I looked, and that was months ago, so I'm sure we've got to be approaching a million if not exceeding it, so--
YouTube hits.
Is that right?
Yeah, it's, it's really been amazing. And the comments too, down the line, just really feel-good comments, you know, as you read down. This is the type of stuff we want to see every day, so it's, it's great. You know, again, we've done more work with our facility to bring it up to, up to snuff so people can just come in and do a show about whatever they please, because on top of what you see on the government channel here, we've got a open canvas for people to come in and create their own programming, and so that's really up to speed. We got cameras installed for the school committee in their workroom, just down the hall in the next building. We put together a newsletter that kind of shares some of the story, which we release on a kind of semi-monthly, monthly basis. We do it every month, but not the same day every month. We kind of wait till there's an event that has some gravity to post it near. We had an open house. We had an annual membership meeting this year, and we've seen a really great increase in membership and usership. If I go to the next page, we entered the year, you know, just with our new facility, with about nine members, and by the end of the year, we were up to 41. And I'm happy to say now that we're in the area 60 to 70. Here we are in 2014, so next year, that's the numbers we'll be seeing on that. We kind of put our training program into place. We've got a number of different classes, you know, from basic shot composition, field, field production, studio production, to more advanced lighting techniques, documentary writing, screenplays, et cetera. We've done a lot of work with our community. In fact, the, the next page has a list of the communities we've worked with. Last year, that was one column. This year, it's two. So we're really happy with that, continuing to reach out to many, many organizations in the community, that which makes up our community. We go on to the next page. We talk about some of the programming that we have. We've got several programming, several series programs by HCAM members and some others that we bring in from out of town. Our long-term goal is to shift that table and make the stuff produced locally in town larger than the stuff produced out of town, but we know we're in startup mode and it's kind of getting people to know about us, getting people to know how easy it is to get involved, and then, you know, getting them into a routine of coming in with some frequency to keep those shows happening. We've got a long list of staff-produced programs as well. Of course, there's some images there. We've got the Christmas in the Square, which we just did. We've got Fourth of July, you know, various lectures and things around town, events at the library, social chamber of commerce, graduation, which we, we did live via the web this year for people who couldn't make the ceremony. And of course, the flash mob, which was just simply saying yes when somebody called and said, "Hey, we'd like to do something for Roger," and a former student of his, I said, "You name it." And that's the start of, obviously, as we've said, a million views. So we've got our series programs, HCAM on the Issues, Getting to Know. We've started another one that we're doing right now, which is Hingham Happenings, a news magazine show, which we do monthly. It's more segment-based, so for example, this week, I'm told that there's gonna be, I think, a backyard skating rink hockey tournament. That's gonna be a nice, interesting news story to put on that. And then we've got our government access programs, which I had intended to add them all up, but you can see there's a number of them. Last year, we did 34 Board of Selectmen meetings, three advisory committee meetings, two community preservation, seven planning board, 22 school committee, and two zoning board of appeals, six others, including annual town meeting, joint committee meetings, open meeting law update and town forum. So that's it. That's, that's why you see so much of us here. And the last thing in that report is kind of going over where we're headed and what we're doing kind of next, over the next few years. We've got a number of other things that, you know, we, that our bylaws, as Jim said, sort of specified that we should share with you, so the majority of that was either sent to you by email or is now in that packet I handed to you. There's various financial things in there. We've got this year's budget. We've got last year's budget. We've got the budget versus actual from last year. We've got a fiscal review from an independent CPA. And, just give you Jim. It's not shown because we actually, I think, did it this year, but we've also installed some new internal controls. We're in the process of, you know, kind of getting some of our banking to work a little bit more efficiently for us, and we've also installed some human resources services to make sure that everything's in compliance there. And so that's the lion's share of what I'm calling sort of this chapter, and then we go into talking about the future, which I'm gonna let Jim take a little bit more of.
So before we go too far--
Unless you have any questions.
You want to do any questions before we get ahead of ourselves here?
No, I'm--
You liking what we're doing so far?
You know, I'll have to tell you, and I see Laura Burns is in the audience, so the On the Issues program is, you know, we just saw an issue here for an hour on a subject, and the fact that that kind of time, we can get a little bit extra to, to share information with people on matters that are of concern or interest to them, or they may not, as we heard tonight, may not even be aware of. So it is another vehicle and it's been helpful to us, the work that you do do, and it's a learning for all of us. You know, getting a schedule to catch me and you on the same place to do something in this room--
It doesn't snow.
It happens to snow now and then, so, but it does work.
Yeah.
It does work, and I applaud the efforts from where this was to where it is, so--
Oh, very good.
I'll open up. My colleagues, have any comments?
I think you all are doing a wonderful job, and I think the highest praise is when everybody says, "We need HCAM to film the meeting," because I know if I can't get to a meeting, I'll ask them.
Right.
Does HCAM, is HCAM gonna film it for you?
Yep.
So really, and the other programs that you all have put together there are really wonderful, plus the staff you've added, they are so much fun to work with.
Excellent.
And they're extremely competent.
Thank you.
So, great job and more.
Excellent.
Do more.
Yeah, we will.
I'd also like to thank you. I use the rerun of the meeting to confirm the accuracy of the minutes. I also strongly recommend and urge you to cover more planning board meetings.
Okay.
I think that that is a critical function in the town, and the more people understand the process, the easier it is for them to recognize the challenges that the town faces with respect to development.
Yeah, I agree, and one of the things that we've worked on is sort of talking, I understand that there may be coming down the pipe in some future months or even years, a redevelopment of the website, so we're looking at how we might be able to interplay with that, so that as people request the rooms for their meeting, an option right then and there will be to include with that request the option for coverage. So we're looking to streamline that and make it easier for not just the planning board, but all boards and committees to do so.
You know, to a point that both Paul and Irma made, you know, again, I'll commend Ms. Burns, since she's in the audience, taking that first step, and it started with the selectmen to film our meetings, and you open your mouth when you realize the TV camera is on. Pretty soon, you don't even realize that it's on and you get comfortable. And there are many groups still that are a little reluctant. There is the issue of, is it okay for me to discuss something in public? Will I be free to discuss what I think in public? And the answer is, it's no different than having, just as we had, a room full of people, except the room is bigger. You know, you've got all those TV channels and it's a great way, you don't have to, you can, I can't serve you a glass of wine. You can have that at home while you're watching the meeting, and that's, that's a good thing--
Something stronger.
Or, depending on the subject, maybe, or Jack Daniels if you're so inclined, but, so that's a big, that's a big plus. I think it gets the word out when, otherwise they can't. Talking too much. Jim, you wanna go talk about--
I just want to do a little bit of future work with you. As you know, we're in a temporary location in South Hingham, and so we cannot provide you with a, you know, an operation plan and budget plan for five years, which the bylaws do require. We can give you an idea of where we're headed, but until we, from our, our permanent location, we're really not spending any money. We're trying to, you know, wait and use our funds for, for building down the road. So it, at this point, it's kind of tough to give you an idea of what a five-year plan might look like. And I just, it's required in the bylaws, so I would just want to make sure that you're--
I don't know what the--
We're still working on locations for them.
It's an ongoing--
It's ongoing. Hopefully, we'll have something--
Well, I think it's good for the public to hear those, because it's, and they need to, what the questions I get is, "Where's my money going?"
Yeah.
And that's what people want to hear, that's all.
And as, as Eric alluded to earlier, besides infrastructure that we've been updating around here in school committee room and wiring in the building and remote cameras and robotics, so the, the funding is used for that directly, and the capital money for our capital improvement of a building is basically what, what's not available to disclose yet, because we, we don't have the building to invest in. So once that happens, we'll certainly come in and share.
And to put it broadly, what we're really looking to do is to build a, you know, we've got a community center in town, but what we're looking to create is a community media center, a place for people to come in and be creative, whether that media is, you know, print, paint, arts, television, internet, you know, whatever it might be, media. We want it to be a place for creativity, a place to, you know, maybe if somebody's not into going out on the baseball diamond or onto the gridiron, maybe they want to come in and be creative in our studios. And so we want to have the facility that will accommodate that, as well as the tools and training available to facilitate all of that. So that's really the broad goal.
And for those who don't know, currently, we're in 2,500 square feet, which is on the small side for a studio, and its configuration is, basically, it's a warehouse that we've adapted. And it's, it's not great, because we do lose a lot of space because of the layout. So when we have the opportunity to, you know, design our own facility and make the appropriate changes to it, it's gonna be wide open to the community to come in. They're certainly welcome now. We love to have them. We, we have people actually walking in off the street. They're working out at Katz. They'll come over. So we do have walk-ins and hopefully, you know, depending on what happens with the future building, increase that number as well.
Any of the committee members have something they'd like to add, or?
I'd like to reiterate everything that has been said.
Hal, if you could just, you have to come to the microphone. Sorry, Hal. You have to come up to the microphone. The folks at home can't hear you if you don't. And I love to--
It's TV, you know.
I'd just like to reiterate everything the committee has said, that Eric, as the executive director, or ED, has done a great job. The people we've hired have done a great job as well, and I can only see great things happening in the future as we continue on with the government channel as well as the other programs we're going to have.
Great, thank you for that.
And for those who don't know, Hal Goldstein is one of our assessors, on the board of assessors, and he's doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the audience? Well, I thank you--
That's it?
--for that update.
You're very welcome.
That's what we're looking for, and--
And then you can watch yourselves on rerun.
You know, and I should point out, for anyone who didn't get to see, this document that, that we have here is available on our website on the About Us page--
Oh, good.
--top right corner, as well as last year's.
Nice.
So feel free to take a look.
Well, thank you. Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you all.
Before we go to budgets, there was one subject I asked the town administrator, and I'll just jump ahead a little bit, on town administrator reports. If the town administrator would give us an update. We received a letter, I think it was in December, from the Department of the Interior concerning Bearcove Park. And there was, the letter from, I forget the title, but the letter generated some discussions on various subjects concerning the town's management of Bearcove Park, Bearcove Park, since its transition from the Department of the Interior and the federal government to the Town of Hingham. So I asked Ted if it would, since some people were aware of that letter, since it's a public document, that it would be appropriate to give the town an update on its contents and, or a general high-level view of its contents and some of the issues that he and town council are, have been dealing with, so if you would.
Sure. So we did receive a letter from the Department of Interior asking to have some explanations made about a number of activities in Bearcove Park, some of which involved the transfer of land regarding the dagger, what is known in town as a dagger parcel, some discussions about the utilization plan from 1972, agreements that we may or may not have in place with agencies that are using the facility, the leasing of Lynch Field, which is former property, and some questions about the land swap that we had proposed with the few acres in the front of the park with the backland. And both Susan Murphy, Land Use Council of the Town, and myself met with Elise La Forest, the regional director for the Department of Interior, who has, I think, 12 states that she manages in this area. And we had a very productive meeting, and Elise asked us to provide her with some documentation, which we're in the process of doing. I think overall, you know, we don't think we have dramatic issues here that we're gonna have to take large measures to correct. I think by and large, it's documenting what's been done and tightening up some of our existing agreements. The main issue was the land swap, I think, and that's, I think, comfortably shown that it was done appropriately.
Yeah, and I, I think, for those who may have heard the letter, if I may, the perception was that perhaps land that belonged to the Department of the Interior was part of the land swap with a private business person, and in point of fact, that is not the case. The land that was swapped, as I understand it, was between the town and the private business person.
Correct. And that was the, the essence of the complaint. You know, they had received some, some complaints, anonymous complaints from area residents, and, you know, the picture that was painted for them was a little different than the reality. Once we got down there and sat with, with them and we brought in our real estate council, we were able to show them, you know, what, what really transpired.
Okay, so there's additional dialogue to go on?
We, we'll continue the conversation, and there's some things that, you know, things that the Department of Interior asked the town to do that the town never did, one of which is erect some signs. And so I'm not sure how that transition came about, but this is about eight or nine years ago, I guess, seven, eight years ago, pretty much before everybody sitting here at this table was involved in running government at this level. So, you know, those are easy fixes, and we'll get to them. You know, they would like some boundaries put on some of the property areas. Again, easy fixes. We have intended to do that. When the back river development was complete, the developer pursuant to the development of that project is required to put bounds in certain areas, and we'll put them in the other areas after that. So most, like I said, most of the, the letter had a tone and tenor that seemed a little different than when we sat and met and talked about the issues and we worked through them.
Good, very good. Great, great job. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for that. Any questions or comments? No? Okay. All right, now we get to the stay awake portion of the meeting having to do with budgets, so don't be excited now. At the last minute, last minutes, we put a hold on a number of budgets, and one of them was dispatch. And that's on our list. We have selectmen, assessors, community planning, and a number of others that we'll go through shortly. But I promised the board that the dispatch budget, which was submitted to us, needed to be further, have further discussion, and I have had some discussion with some of my peers in the other towns to see what's happening to their dispatch budget versus what's happened to ours. And it would appear that there's additional discussions that have to be on, continued on this, on this matter. It's not yet resolved, but it will be, obviously, before we get, move it along to advisory. So I, with your concurrence, I'd like to put a hold on that again, and particularly in view of the fact of the, that we announced earlier today with the passing of one of their key members of the dispatch organization. So if you'll indulge me, I would like to just table that yet again. I can tell you, I did discuss it with the other towns, and they are going to reference it to their town administrators or administrators and get back with Ted on the, on the subject. So with that, let's start with the selectman budget. And it's on page two. I had put, I had put a hold on it, and the hold I had put on it was a proposal to take out of the budget the $6,500 in selectmen salaries and to, to clarify the issue and the reason. It doesn't impact me, because I'm done, but the issue that comes in hand is, as you'll find out, what your expenses-- But the issue that comes in hand is, as you'll find out, your expenses under the rules of the IRS are constrained by your salary. You cannot spend more than that. That's number one. More important-
You cannot deduct what that is.
You cannot deduct.
Spend anything you want.
You can spend anything you want. But the IRS cares, doesn't care what, they cap you at that. The second issue is that most of us use that money, I suspect, for charity or donations anyway. So I think those would continue as they should out of our, out of our own pocket. So that was one revision. And the second was the clerical, Ted, the $25,000 for, for the clerical grant writer. Grant writer. You would not recommend that we continue with that, as I understand. Because that's right. So the budget would be revised downward by that total-
No, I didn't include that number.
Yeah, okay.
So the only change-
Is the select-
Would be the selectman's salary if you're going to propose that.
Yep, that's what I'm proposing. So. Tough issue. But I, by the way, I should tell you, I made a similar recommendation, I thought of a similar recommendation on the assessors, but that's not my place to make that. I think the assessors should make that decision as to whether or not they should go forward on that. But that would be my consideration. So that's the only revision I have on the selectmen's budget, the $6,500. It would be effective.
Charles, give me, I don't vote, so sorry to be, flipping back at you guys.
So I'll make a motion, if nobody else will. The heat is on, isn't it, huh?
You know what? I've served on a volunteer basis for 19 years.
Right.
Serving the town, Ian.
Right.
And it was, it was kind of nice to get a little something in the mail after going to the third floor. And now you come and you want-
Now I'm leaving.
Take that away.
Well, I mean, it's-
I'm not sure how I feel about that, to be honest with you.
No, that's okay. We don't have to vote it tonight if you want more time to think about it. I'm just putting forth that suggestion.
Well, I wasn't even aware that you could deduct expenses. Number one, I never have. I've eaten them. And I think it's really up to each person what they do with the small amount of money. This is not, we're not exactly going to go out and buy a Range Rover.
That's for sure.
We're not even going to pay a month's rental. No, a month's lease on a Range Rover.
It won't be.
So I, I'd leave it alone. Because I think it's up to us what we do with that money.
I concur.
Okay. Then I'll, my suggestion is withdrawn. Tell your friend Kate it didn't happen. By the way, The Globe, if you saw the article on Sunday in Globe South, this was a discussion about selectmen salaries. It doesn't happen in Hingham. Most people take a salary because they take, they get the health benefit.
Correct.
That has not been our history. I think there's only one selectman in recent memory who has done that.
Yes, a couple.
Though they're HIPAA protected, so please, let's not mention their names.
No, we won't mention their names. That's not the issue. So, so the issue on the selectman budget is we have a proposal for $474,307.
Second. Did we read the right number, Ted?
474-307 is the number you have.
Okay.
Just checking with my tab.
Well, so moved.
All right, I need a second?
Second.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Assessors. Irma, you put a hold on assessors, and that is Ted.
Oh, because I-
Tab 10, or page 10.
Tab 10.
Page 10.
Page 10?
Yeah.
I would really like to see more than the $25,000 that Ted is looking for, for the appraisals, and a bid came in for, is it Vision, Ted?
No, we got a bid from one of the former assessors, who has a consulting firm, Mark Toberski, who does appraisal work, and it came in at under $25,000, so.
In that, in that expense line, is, is it, I think it's Vision that we've just picked for, I think, $79,000 over three years. So he is going to need a little bit more money. He is going to need some money for appraisals. And I'd rather have more in there and then have it be given back versus him have to come and get a reserve fund transfer because the advisory committee and, I'll speak for all three of us, the board of selectmen do not look favorably on reserve fund transfers. So that's my take. And I think they would, I think the assessors would like to have the money, too.
Did you have a discussion, Ted, with the assessors?
I spoke with Rick. My understanding from when I spoke with him was that the money that he had in his line item existing, $69,800, was sufficient for Vision, and that the original estimate he gave of $45,000 was without having gone out and gotten bids. You know, as we get closer to budget, I asked departments to sort of document their requests, and when it came back, it came in at $19,000. So having a $25,000 bid, I felt gave him a little cushion and satisfied the need of the department. If you allocate more, you know, they certainly wouldn't use it if they don't need it.
They don't. They're all cheap.
So-
And it's $79,000, excuse me, the, at the budget meeting this morning.
Mm-hmm.
It's $79,000 that came in.
I have not seen the bids. I was out at another meeting this morning.
So should we, should we hold this until you see that?
If you'd like, yeah.
I mean, it sounds like we've got two different-
Well, we're talking about two different subjects. You know, the $69,000 is a line item for Vision. If the bids came in differently, I met with Rick today, he didn't mention anything to me, so I'll have to, you know, we were talking about another issue, so he might not have thought it was of merit. But I was specifically, the $45,000 was earmarked for special appraisal work.
For the commercial?
For commercial properties. And when we looked at the bid proposals that came in, they came in underneath the 25, and that's why I lowered that number. It wasn't a discriminate, just take 20,000 away. So, you know, like you said, Irma, we could certainly add it to the budget. It's extra, you know, and if they don't need it, they won't spend it. But I think when you get to the bottom of the budget, you're going to find that you don't have a lot of extra to just leave in different departments, because you're going to have to say no to a few people.
Well, and at that time, we'll balance and, and decide on the worthiness of-
When we vote these, they're going to advisory.
Correct.
They're going, as soon as we vote them. There's no revisit. That's the way we've done business, and that's the way we'll continue to do business, with each department on its own. So if the number is not right at 45, or if you don't think it's right, and Ted thinks it's closer to 25, I'm going to go with the town administrator and his research. And if they need more, they have an opportunity to reposition it with the, with the advisory committee, right? I would assume.
I mean, that's generally the process. Like I said, I didn't speak to Rick today about the Vision bid, so I don't know the parameters of it.
So I would, so if we did the 25, what would that do to the number 299-579, Ted? Would that come down by 20?
No, it's included. The, the way this spreadsheet works is, the budget recommendation I've given you is 324-579 for the assessors department. It includes the original request plus $25,000.
And if they can, I mean, my feeling would be if they can, if Irma's right-
Yeah, I mean, if the $79,000 is accurate, then, you know, you're going to need more money in that aspect of the line.
You're going to need another 10 for sure.
I can't confirm that for you today. I don't, I haven't seen the bids. I don't know the scope of them.
Would it be better to just hold it?
I'd like to hold it.
Hold it, okay.
And give advisory the best number we can.
Okay. Okay. So, Paul, you okay?
I'm fine with that. That'd be my thought, too.
Okay. Next one.
Page 26.
Page 26, Community Planning. Ted, there was a question on the additional requests for this. Have you heard anything further? It wasn't clear to me, or my memory banks, anyway, as to the additional requests.
So there's three, there's three personnel requests included in this. I've recommended two of them. The requests are for a part-time clerical position within the building department, a full-time building inspector within the building department, and a full-time assistant conservation officer paid 20 hours from wetland filing fees and 15 hours from the general government's budget. I've recommended to you in this request, the conservation position and the, the part-time clerical position and a portion of the building department's position, I think half funding of that. Half funding of that.
So a part-time building inspector?
Yeah, 20 hours. That, that's what totals the recommendations I've given you of $67,000.
And you've heard nothing since to change that recommendation, or will it cause you to change that?
I haven't, no.
Oh, okay.
I made a recommendation to the town administrator slightly differently. And my recollection is that, Bruce, you had asked for statistics to come in. And I don't think we've seen anything like that. However, I did my own research over the holidays and asked at numbers of gatherings, people that actually use our permitting services, where they felt that we needed more people. Because I'm very reluctant to add positions to the government side. Without a doubt, every person said, in the building department, we need to clone Gene Kehoe, which, so I don't think we can clone her, but we'll have to add somebody. That was a definite. They, really, their work is much more complex and extended. I would also make a suggestion that on the conservation agent, that we ease back into that, that we fund a second conservation agent with the wetlands fund, so for part-time, and then we take another look at it. Perhaps by then we'll have statistics. And so that gives them help, but it also asks for proof that you really need this. Because we went through an awful lot when we had to cut back and as people left, and creating community planning was supposed to streamline the personnel side of it. So I think this is, to me, this is like a nice middle ground.
Okay. Paul, any thoughts you know better than-
Well, certain aspects of it. I believe that the mission is critically important, and it seems to be a, an ongoing struggle that the building department has to keep up with the permitting applications, the inspections. I think it's vitally important. I mean, it's one thing to permit a structure, it's quite another thing to make sure it's built right. That just quite simply takes time. Ironically, last night, this South Hingham study group, there, has been formed recently, spent a great deal of time talking about issues with respect to the Conservation Commission's role in determining what constitutes upland and, you know, the significance of vernal pools and flagging properties for purposes of development. It definitely has an integral role in the whole planning process, and I'm just a little bit uneasy that such a significant function of town government might be hamstring. Having said that, it would have been good to see some facts and figures. I do think that the director of community planning has got an awful big job on her hands, because in addition to the work during the day, this night work attends these positions as well. So I tend to stick with the town administrator's recommendation. I think he's better situated to kind of see the day-to-day needs that these committees would, or these departments, rather, would have. I just don't want to see us get into a reactionary place if we have a submittal with the complexity of, say, the shipyard. That could become a disaster if we're not ready for it.
Okay. So I think Irma's got a, you have a suggestion as to how we do it. I think that my hangup is the data to support it.
Right.
So if we could get that data-
Yeah, in the correspondence file, I saw it before I left, which is now a week and a half ago, almost, it was a fairly long package from Mary-
I didn't see it.
-that was sent up here. So I'll make sure each of you get a copy of it tomorrow morning.
We can, if you get that to us, and then we'll vote it next week. That would be, that would be good. Okay. Okay. Fire. Safety. Page 60. I, I put a hold on this, and I'll give you my, I certainly appreciate the job that they do. There's no question about that. My, one question that I asked wasn't answered, and the question was, the absence rate for the fire department is three times the level of the average town department. Now, part of that is because of the, the structure that they have in the work rules. But my feeling is when you're running at three times the rate of, of absence, that I don't want to pay that. I think that we shouldn't, we didn't get an explanation as to why it was running at that rate. And I was proposing that instead of adding three people, that we add just one. That would still permit them to run at double the rate of absence, but I wouldn't pay for all of it. That was, that was my thinking, and that's what I'm putting forth to my colleagues. It certainly isn't the issue that they have done a yeoman's job over the years of managing their dollars. This is the one area where attention needs to be met. And more importantly, the other side of this, in my thinking, was, we're going to spend a lot of money in the fire department this year out of the budget, things that are necessary. And we know coming at us are more dollars for future needs that they're going to have. So I just wanted to cut it back by that amount. Sure, or whatever, whoever wants to go. That was my point of discussion.
You know, I, I, I don't know what's, whether it's appropriate to default to my own experience with the role of the, the fire department and, to me, the critical role that it provides, emergency medical aid to the citizens and people passing through this town if they get involved in accidents or have a problem.
That's not what I'm challenging.
I know, but I've known Mark Duff for quite a long time, and I have- I'm not accepting what he says at face value, however, I accept what he says. I, I think that, I know, I know, that may sound, yep. What I'm trying to say is-
Is that lawyer speak?
Well, I mean, I, I think what I heard him say is if he got additional staffing in, in this critical position, that, that would kind of tamp down the burnout factor that comes with the cycling and manning of the ambulances, whether it's emergency medical or advanced medical support. I'm just a little uneasy challenging that because of the role that the ambulance serves to the town.
No, I'm not challenging it. I'm just saying this is a management question, and I didn't get a management answer. The answer was, he didn't, he couldn't explain why is he running at three times the absence rate. Irma's, that's, Irma comes from the world I came from, and he's running at three times the rate. I'm not, I don't object to his adding three people. I, if he says he needs the three people, I'm just saying, two of those people you got right in your own budget. If you manage that better, if you manage your absence rate better, you might-
I'm not sure how he manages his absence rate. If, if the firefighter has the right to use the sick day and, and elects to do so, I'm not sure that it's de facto punishment of the chief.
Well, I'm not saying it's the punishment of the chief. I'm just saying it's managing the resource that you give him. He couldn't explain to me why he was running at a high level of absence. That was the question I asked, and that's why they prompted to me, well, can you give me an explanation? That's what I-
What if he hasn't?
Well, that's what he said.
And what if, what if he still needs the extra staff based on the calls that he's still, what do we do then?
He didn't say that. He didn't say that. He didn't tell me that. That's, that's why I'm saying- That's, that's why I'm saying, well, tell me, give me an answer and I'll be happy to come, to agree to it.
I'm, I'm going with the budget as Mark asked for it. And I guess as the town administrator, you recommended the whole thing, right Ted?
Correct, so am I.
I've gone over, and because we're very close to the fire department for all kinds of reasons, I've gone over the numbers with Deputy Olson. He's in the numbers. He's my kind of guy. They've had a handful of the sick days, a sick time or a cluster of people. Mark's aware of it. He needs the three people. They're burning people out, they're using way too much overtime and Bob did, if you remember the graph he showed of the overtime, and if you added people, the overtime would go down. And you wouldn't burn them out as fast.
And that's, that's right. And he's, that's why he didn't need the full three people. He said he could control that, that was part of the discussion. I'm just peeing up the question, he's running at an extremely high absence rate and he can't explain it.
Well, and they've had several disabilities long-term, which will use up more, which will burn people out faster. They have more ambulance runs and if you listen to the scanner, they're busy puppies.
Well, the data was there, yeah.
Yep, yep.
So your consent would be let the budget go forward? Is that, I can go along with that. I can, I'm not, this isn't a big issue, I just want to point it out. Unless Ted, you have some...
No, I would just say that you're correct about the sick leave. And, you know, I think approval of this budget doesn't mean that we're not going to continue to look at that sick leave and that I, as I sit and evaluate Mark, you know, won't say, I expect to see performance on this sick leave. Because it is an issue and we, you know, we can't tell you exactly why. He can't tell you exactly why people are calling in sick. Those are hard things to calculate, but we can see the numbers and we can see the trends. And it wasn't always the same trend in the same department. So we're seeing a bubble.
That's, that's the question.
And fatigue will be removed as a factor presumably.
But I want to assure you that whatever the factor is, we're still going to look at this and try to define why that's happening.
You should look at it for all departments.
We do, we, that's how we found out that we were up above.
That's what I did and that this stood out the page. Everybody else is running at one, one person and he's running at three.
We track all, all leave for all people and we specifically track sick leave for all the departments. Our human resources director, David Basler, has it generally on a quarterly basis. And we monitor this, we've been doing this for at least a dozen years since David's been here. So we can see when a department's starting to...
I haven't seen that one.
Yeah, well, I gave it to you, it was, David gave it, yes he did, at the last budget meeting. David gave it out to everybody and that's what I said, that's why I put a hold, I'd like to hear.
So it has increased in the fire department within the last couple of years?
So is it a consistent increase? Did it bump up and then go and no, because nobody paid attention to it?
No, it bumped up and we're trying to, you know, work through some of the issues to figure out why and how we can lower it. And, you know, Mark's been at it for about two years now.
And the fact that we're adding three people now, it's going to take a while for them to get the people, get them into an academy.
Correct.
And put them on the line.
You're adding them in 2015, you know, you have, it's six months away, so...
I mean, that would give us time for him to maybe do a more in-depth analysis as to his issues. As I said, it just raised the flag with me.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's more in-depth analysis. I think it's just more in-depth work with the personnel to understand why they can't come to work for whatever reason and try to get them to work. And, you know, again, it's not rampant across the entire department. There are a few people, and as Irma did mention, there are a few significant injuries that have just elevated naturally. Not that the injuries are natural, but naturally, the injuries would cause it to be elevated.
Well, sometimes they arise out of the work itself.
Yes.
Yeah, no, that's...
I wouldn't say that would be natural.
Yeah, that's, that, it's, that's part of it.
It's stressful work.
It's very stressful.
The nature of the beast.
Okay, so the proposal is to go with the selectmen's budget and Ted, that was $4,787,852?
Am I right?
Nope.
No, no.
Four million eight hundred and sixteen thousand four hundred and thirty-one.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong page.
I'll do so moved.
About a second.
So we don't have to read it again.
Four, four, yeah, yeah. Four million eight sixteen, yep.
Four thirty-one.
Where we are, okay. Okay. Health? There's a hold on dispatch, health.
I don't think you called for a vote.
Fire, I don't think you voted fire.
Oh, did we? I thought we did, I'm sorry.
I did a so moved.
So moved, I'm sorry. Four million eight one six, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Health? Seven.
Ninety-seven?
Yeah. Why, there was a hold on this one?
Are we still going to hold it? It was the number of hours and I think Ted wanted to discuss further.
Yeah, I haven't been able to come to a resolution with the department about some personnel changes they were considering. I didn't recommend the extra hours because I just don't see the justification about adding more staff in that, in that department right now.
Can we wait on the hold until Ted resolves the...
That's not going to happen before town meeting, I don't think.
Really?
So you're going to have to decide for yourselves whether or not, you know, this is for extra hours for one of the inspectors within the department. And, you know, I just don't see the need at this level, at this volume of activity and work. I mean, I compare and I contrast the building department, there's just no comparison.
Well, for, for every building permit except like a roof or something like that, there is usually a board of health inspection.
No comparison to the amount, the, the, one versus dozens of activities that occur in the building department.
I, I discussed this with Bruce, maybe there's just a difference of opinion. And the fog inspections, we've certainly ramped those up thankfully. And so the inspection services, to me, have increased. And if you're looking to increase community planning, it would seem there would be an associated increase in the board of health.
This budget didn't go down nearly as much as the community planning budgets went down during the recession, which I can tell you accurately because I'm the one who took those budgets down. Actually with you on the advisory committee, very hard in building, planning, and eventually what became community planning. We very, we hardly touched the board of health during that process. And so now that we're adding stuff back as the building activity bit kicks up, I'm telling you that I don't think it's necessary to add it in the board of health right now. And not, I don't think that all... I did add the additional request in for their copy machine because it's, it needs to be replaced.
I'm not sure that all building activities trigger board of health involvement.
No, but the majority do. That's my understanding from the inspection standpoint.
Well, perhaps, but the degree of intensity, I think, varies wildly.
I don't disagree with that.
I'm going to go with the judgment of the town administrator on this one. If they, you know, if there's, if there's something we're missing, advisory will pick it up if Irma, if there's, if we're off on this one.
I'll talk to the advisory liaison. I know the advisory liaison is adamant that the money be left in there.
I haven't heard that, so...
She was...
Who was that?
Lizzie.
I spoke to Lizzie the other day, she was clearly not adamant with me, but...
Really?
That was my conversation with her. She didn't, I don't recall she opined to me because that's generally not her role to opine to me. She asks my opinion and she makes up her own mind. So she didn't share it with me, but I think I've worked with her well enough to know that if she was adamant, I would have heard it.
I'll make a motion that we approve the recommended budget set forth by the town administrator, $319,605.
I'll second that.
I'm going to pass on it.
Okay, you're going to, all right, so...
Yep.
All those in favor? Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
You're going to abstain? One abstention.
I don't, I don't like a no vote here because that says I don't like the whole budget and that's not true. I just think it's, doesn't have enough money in it.
Public Works, I saw the memo Ted from Randy. It was much more detailed in terms of how he intended to use the additional resources and that explained adequately to me what he was looking for. So I'm fine with the public health.
I'm good with it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we vote to approve the...
Public Works?
Public Works budget of $3,061, $61,415 as recommended by the town administrator.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ted, employee benefits?
Did you do landfill too? Did you have to do landfill, I think, or did you do that earlier?
You know, yeah, we did landfill, I thought. I thought it was just that was the only reason.
Sorry, what was the next question?
The employee benefits, is that...
I think we were, I mean, employee benefits are going to change. So you vote this number and then it changes several times as we get closer to the town meeting. I will...
You won't, you won't know for a couple of weeks yet, is that...
Hopefully we'll have a good understanding on the 31st January. So, you know, the day after your next meeting won't help you for two weeks. That's when we're hopefully setting rates. My recommendation would be to vote the budget, pass it on to advisory, let them do their work. As happens every year, both advisory and selectman wind up changing their recommendations because it'll be what Mayflower Healthcare Group says the rates are going to be.
Right, okay. So should the vote reflect that subject to...
I think the reason we held was Irma, you were looking for something on...
I wanted to break out by department.
And you got that, right?
I got enough that I, I wanted and the rest was too much of a, a lot of work for Sue. And she was kind of buried. And what I was looking for was by department and she gave me the largest department first. So it looks like the education is 67%, not including administrative education. So out of that budget. And then if, if they have time, they'll do the rest. But just wanted to see how much.
Right. Ted, maybe the way we should vote is let's be transparent about it and say, we'll vote it subject to confirmation by the town administrator to occur over the next few months or something.
I'm going to bring you a new number back. It might be in two weeks, it might be in three weeks. As soon as I get it from Mayflower, every year we go through the cycle, I'll give you that number back. Everything else will stay the same. No other numbers in there are going to change.
So why vote something we know is going to change? I guess that's just...
Well, just as a practice, you send it over to advisory so they can get going.
Well, they got enough to get going by sending them all this other stuff.
Is this the only item in this that you didn't vote? Just the group insurance? You wrote all the other employee benefits?
We didn't vote on the assessor.
Any assessors, okay.
Yeah, so we've got a, well, we've got the community planning as a hold, the assessors on a hold, and this one we could keep on a hold if you think you're going to have it in three weeks.
But just group insurance, not the rest of employee benefits?
The total employee benefits that was not voted.
Pardon?
The total employee benefit.
Total employee benefits, the twelve million was not voted.
Oh, okay. Well, those are separate items in the warrant, so I don't see any reason why you wouldn't send them over individually.
Send them off, send them all over.
So that would be other post-employment benefits, contributory retirement, workers' comp, unemployment, Medicare, all of those are ready to go.
And they're not going to change.
And they're not going to change, okay. So Irma, you want to, you...
Do you want me to read the numbers or just say, I'll make a motion that we approve employee benefits with the exception of group insurance? And I don't have a number, so some $6 million.
So that'll be $1,090,001,96 of other post-employment benefits. $3,845,487 of contributory retirement. $250,000 of workers' comp, $50,000 for unemployment, and $758,080 for mandatory Medicare. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. With the new number, if Sue has time, because I think advisory would like to see this, in fact, I know a couple of people would. When you give us a new number for group insurance?
Yes, of course, I, I'll distribute it. At this point in time, I'm going to both boards simultaneously.
Could you have it broken out by department?
Sure.
So we can see what the other departments...
Okay, so we've got a hold just on group insurance, assessors, and community planning. All right? Okay, so as soon as we can get those, we can vote those. All right, so that keeps Greg busy. Okay, we have some other votes to take care of. My vote list, here it is. Due to the, I think it was due to the snowstorm, the Community Preservation Committee recommendations did not reach us by the due date. And, do you have them now?
I do have them.
You do have them now, all right. But we need formally to open the warrant in order to insert them since the clock expired on the 21st at 5 o'clock. So I'll entertain a motion if we could open the warrant for the articles on community.
So vote.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So Sharon, as the motion is written to open the warrant, close it, and it's closed. Okay, Ted, the building permits for the South Shore Country Club?
That's the assurance...
That's the accident with the sprinkler head over there that...
Oh, the one that...
It's ugly.
They had some demolition that had to be done, there'll be some rebuilding that has to be done.
Okay, so...
We have historically asked you to waive the building permit fees in that circumstance.
Okay. Paul, would you like to make that?
Sure, I move that we waive the building permit fees for the Susha Country Club with respect to the work just recited.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
February 8th is Lincoln Day in Hingham. And we have a, I think you've all received notice that at 11 o'clock at the Old Ship Church, we're going to have some festivities and speaking as well. So remind folks of that, but we have a, we have a proclamation. Ms. Lauter, would you like to read the proclamation?
Town of Hingham, Massachusetts proclamation. Whereas the town of Hingham was settled in 1635 by a small band of Puritan pilgrims, many of whom came from Hingham, England, and environs. And whereas, among the descendants of those original settlers were two famous American public figures who shared the common family name Lincoln, as well as a common heritage. And whereas, it is a longstanding Hingham tradition to honor and celebrate their birthdays. General Benjamin Lincoln, a lifelong Hingham citizen and a hero of the American Revolution, and Abraham Lincoln, our 16th president and the towering figure of the Civil War. And whereas, we honor and celebrate the lives and deeds of the two Lincolns because of the indelible legacy of community building and preservation they have left for us. And whereas, in this year, 2014, we pay special honor to four centuries of our citizens, those famous like Benjamin Lincoln and Abraham Lincoln, and those unknown to history who worked in myriad ways to build and sustain this wonderful community of Hingham and the broader communities of state and nation. And whereas, the preservation of community is a perpetual task in which each generation must fully participate. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Hingham, do hereby officially proclaim Saturday, February 8th, 2014, Lincoln Day. We urge also that as many citizens as possible join us at Old Ship Church on Saturday, February 8th, 2014, at 11:00 a.m. for a patriotic ceremony of celebration. Finally, we urge each citizen to take to heart the examples of the two Lincolns and those of four centuries of Hingham citizens. And we urge each citizen to participate in some concrete way in the strengthening and preservation of this community of Hingham and the broader communities of state and nation for the generations which will succeed us. Given under our hands and seal of Hingham, this 23rd day of January 2014, L. Bruce Rabuffo, Chairman, Irma H. Lauter, and Paul K. Healy.
Well done.
Well done.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. So we will, we will sign that as soon as we vote proclaim Saturday, February 8th, 2014, to be Lincoln Day in Hingham. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a request for council. I am advised that the total request for council for these three items would be approximately $35,000 since upon the, above and beyond the approval of the town administrator to approve. So, did I say that, did I understand that correctly?
Correct.
So $40,000 total.
Thirty-five is what it was told.
Oh, I thought you meant above and beyond what he can prove.
Thirty-five, thirty-five total.
Thirty-five total?
Yeah, that's what, so... Yeah, that's what, so, so if, Irma, you would make that motion to approve that request unless somebody has a question about it. I did discuss the zoning board of appeals request with the chairman of the zoning ZBA and its legal guidance that they need from our land use council. The Three Otis Street is work that she's doing and that work that we referenced, or Ted referenced earlier in the Department of the Interior Bear Cove Park discussion.
Is this the same legal form for everything?
Yes. Yes.
Do you want me to do that?
Sure.
Hey, I make a motion to approve the following requests for counsel advising the zoning board of appeals on SEB matter, Three Otis Street and Bear Cove Park, Department of Interior.
I will second that. I also have a comment. I think that, just as a general observation, the, the three matters here, two in particular, the water's fairly deep in terms of the legal issues. So I anticipate that the SEB matter, that's the Route 40B that's proposed on Upper Main Street, is, is rife with all kinds of issues. And if Mr. Fisher is asking for assistance in light of his own formal, formidable legal skill set, it's warranted.
That, that's exactly the discussion I had with, with Joe, excuse me, was just that issue that this is, requires much more work and, and more detailed work, and unfortunately...
And the expectation is this is going to go to litigation. You know, if it's, if the project's approved, you know, the abutters will likely litigate. If the project isn't approved, there's a likelihood of litigation on the other side from the plaintiff. In neither case, you know, we've seen that we're better off having our councils involved earlier if we suspect litigation's going to be involved, so it'll protect us down better.
I've gone to all the meetings, or as many as I could get to, and I'm going to continue to go to these meetings, and our, our boards are doing an extraordinary job here.
It's not easy work. Okay, any further, any other discussion? That being said, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, and Paul, could you do the...
Sure.
One-day liquor license?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages liquor license to Kim O'Brien for the Hingham Sports Partnership Annual Comedy Night fundraiser to be held at the Loring Theater on Sunday, March 30th, 2014, from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, now, what else? Do we have, town administrator, do you have any other reports other than...
I mentioned to you already about the Department of Interior. I wanted to let you know that I've been contacted by Fox News 25, and they have asked if, they have a program called Zip Trips, and they'd like their 200th show to be about Hingham. They've done this once before, but they are planning the 200th episode of that show to be aired in August, I understand. And I've already put them in contact with our informal permitting group for large events. They suspect it'll be a fairly large event. They're planning a fairly big show of it.
Oh, nice.
So I'll give you more information as that comes along.
That's great.
Great.
That's, that's great. Anything else, Ted? Paul, anything?
I'd just like to inform each of you that, I think I mentioned it earlier, but we, the South Shore, or self, I keep getting the name wrong, the South Hingham Study Group or Work Group met last night. The Director of Community Planning joined us and gave us an overview, some of the issues that we're dealing with in the Derby Street Industrial Park corridor. For those of you that get on Route 3, you're soon to see, if you haven't already noticed, that there's some land clearing going on across from the Descends of Jewelers. In the next several weeks, you can anticipate that there'll be blasting going on there as well. That is subject to all kinds of regulations overseen by the fire chief in particular. But I'm informed that there's a person on site. The town has a protocol in place. If there is any kind of problem, to notify the site developer, who in this case is Bristol Brothers owner of the property. We're going to continue to have meetings. For those of you that are interested in the status of the general area or have any particularized concern or just generally want to get involved in the conversation, it's informal, we welcome anybody to come. That's about it.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Irma?
I've got a couple of things. The CPC has now voted their recommendations for the 2014 town meeting, and on the 30th, we'll be having a joint meeting with advisory, Board of Selectment Advisory, and the CPC presenting their projects. This group does an amazing amount of work in a very short time. In all the years I've been working with them, I had no idea the depth or the, the amount of work that each of the individual members do. And secondly, Margaret Connady, our high school athletic director, has been selected by the Massachusetts Secondary Schools Athletic Directors Association as the Athletic Director of the Year. So way to go, Margaret. One of the things, she's done so much for our athletic program here. One of the things that I like best is at the end of the year, she does a senior awards night where every one of the seniors that has participated in sports gets a picture on a big screen. The high school auditorium is packed. You have to get there early to get a seat. They get to come up on stage, and Margaret reads all of their accomplishments, both in sports and in the academic side, which I think is wonderful, talks about what colors they're going off to, and then they get a commemorative plaque with their picture. It's an action shot of one of their many sports activities. So congratulations to Margaret. And also, congratulations to our boys and girls track and field team who won for the third straight year their Division III MIAA rally, relay. So I think we've got a small dynasty building. And the last thing is the South Shore Conservatory on Saturday night, the 25th, is having their annual large fundraiser, and it's a Blues Night theme, and they have lots of great entertainment, food and beverage, adult beverages, and silent auctions and raffles, and it's really a neat time, and there are Dropkick Murphy tickets, which I have my name on already. So if you're interested, go up on their website and come. It's a wonderful, wonderful time. That's it.
Very nice. Very nice. Good. I, I mentioned again earlier the, the work that our DPW department during, during the snowstorm. Mother Nature hasn't given up. Saturday is coming, and I understand the Super Bowl is coming on February 2nd with some snow associated with it, the long-range forecasters. I guess the real question we have to say is if the Patriots were playing, we wouldn't have to plow the streets, but because everybody'd be inside their buildings watching the game. But we, I'm just concerned for all of you, it's, it's going to be very cold the next few, few days into next week. And I know for, just watch out for your neighbors, particularly those who are elderly, because this time of the year, it's, can be very challenging for them. So if you have a next-door neighbor who isn't maybe in need, just check on them. That would be a good thing to do. We, we have had very good coverage on the FOSS issue. I know there are some comments. We'd love to hear them as this issue continues to go forward, and I think that would be in everybody's interest to get your comments into us at an appropriate time. So as Irma mentioned, but more importantly, I'll mention that we have two meetings coming up on the 30th, which will be for the hearing of the CPC articles with the, a joint committee meeting with the advisory. And on February 6th, we will have a similar meeting with the school committee proposed budget on, on that date. So just mark your calendars for that. The selectmen will meet at 7:00 on both of those nights to take care of any business that may arise during the course of, during the course of that. With that being said, I'd like to, we're going to adjourn now not to return to executive session for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations with the fire chief, labor negotiations with the police patrolman, and real estate negotiations at Three Otis Street because discussion of these matters in open session may be, have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town. Mr. Healy?
Second. So moved.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion to adjourn, not to return?
Aye.
Aye.